Good evening and welcome to the October 27, 2014, meeting of the Town of Scarborough Planning Board. If you would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before I start this evening, I just do want to apologize. We're running a few minutes late. The Planning Board had a workshop this evening on the new cell tower ordinance that the Town Council has passed. And I want to thank Jay and Dan, our Town Planner and Assistant Planner, for their reference this evening. It really brought, shed some light on it for us, so I thank you for that. Having said that now, could we please have the roll call?
Ms. Ogles, Mr. McGee, Mr. Buffard, Mr. Paul, Mr. Fellow, Mr. DuPont, and Mr. Mazer.
Our next item on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes of October 6, 2014. I move to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion?
Chairman, with the point of order, would you like to make me a voting member this evening?
Yes, I can make you a voting member this evening. Thank you very much. Due to the fact that Mr. Buffard is not here, please make it known that Nick is in fact a voting member this evening. Thank you, sir. Discussion on minutes. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? And I show that to be unanimous. Item number four this evening, Foster Farms subdivision two, Habitat for Humanity, a humanity of Greater Portland, requests a preliminary review for a 13-lot subdivision off Broad Turn Road. Mr. Chase.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you just know, this is for a 13-lot, single-family subdivision off Broad Turn Road. The subject property is in the VR2 zone. This application has been before the Board on a couple of occasions. Once as a sketch plan, you conducted a preliminary discussion about this item. Couple of meetings ago, it was on your agenda at the last meeting, at which time the applicant requested to be tabled to be able to make some adjustments based on prior comments. Just by way of brief background for, to remind the Board members and those of the public who may be interested, this subject property was purchased by the Town of Scarborough in 2006 for the stated purpose of providing for an affordable housing opportunity in town, as well as to maintain the preponderance of the property as passive, natural area, open space, trails and the like. And so the plan before you is sort of the, is that notion, in concept anyway, coming forward. Prior to coming to the Board, the applicant's team held a few meetings, I know with the neighborhood, surrounding neighborhoods, residents to come up with the general concepts for development. So that's just a bit of background. Again, as I mentioned, this item had been before you before. It really, one of the big questions the Board had at the last meeting was really the design of the open space. As Board members will recall, one of the design elements in the VR2 is to provide for open space, that is, both natural areas and passive, like we talked about, which is really sort of about 15 of the acres are proposed to be remained as such. There's also a component that speaks to having active open space. And the intent there is that the VR2 allows for very small lots, clustered housing, and the idea is to allow for some type of active recreational area that may not otherwise be able to be accommodated on the smaller lots that are permitted within the zone. And so again, at the Board's last discussion, there was some discussion around the location of that active space and how that was designed. I know the applicants, I believe, prepared to sort of walk through a couple of iterations. I know we worked on some guidance from the Board and how they wound up at their proposal. So I think that's really the biggest item that staff had in our comments. The other elements that we touched on were just greater clarification around the allowed activities within the 75-foot stream setback and really having an understanding of what has been looked at through the DEP permitting process. And then again, just a final discussion about sort of the open space and the future uses, ownership and activities on those open spaces. So with that, I would turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, my name is Lee Allen, Northeast Civil Solutions. Here tonight seeking preliminary approval for the Foster Farms subdivision for the Habitat for Humanity. As Jay had mentioned, we tabled at the last meeting, due to some back and forth, we'd had kind of, we took some direction from the Board and moved that open space kind of, it is one of the lots, and we'd switched it with a lot that's furthest to the northeast, closest to the Saratoga Lane subdivision. By doing so and trying to fit a lot of parking, as trailhead parking, to access the remaining open space to the northern part of the subdivision, we kind of ran roughshod over the intent of the zoning ordinance where it calls for common space and village green space. And that kind of led us into a discussion back with Jay and Dan to kind of rethink what we are doing and put that open space, central area, kind of back into the middle of the proposed subdivision. And reduced the amount of trailhead parking because as you may or may not recall, the end of Saratoga Lane, at the end of that, there's some parking to access the same parcel of land. And there's a trail system that starts from back there. So I think we were a little overzealous in the amount of trailhead parking we're trying to accommodate, so we went ahead with something that was a little less intrusive. And you can see that's kind of between the open space to kind of the northwest where that sliver of wetlands slides up into our site. So that, I think, is a big issue that we were kind of wrestling with, and I think we've addressed in meeting with Jay and Dan. The second issue is the open space and clarifying what that open space is. Jay and I had a chance to talk today about how that open space may be divvied up in the future. Right now, the way we're showing it is that there's the right-of-way for the road, all the individual lots in the subdivision, and all the remaining land is being called open space. To some degree, that works. Some degree, it doesn't because there's homeownership association that's going to maintain a lot of this area around the road, the stormwater system, and the lines that connect to the stormwater system. So the thinking is that ultimately, there'll be two types of open space. There'll be homeownership association-owned open space and Town of Scarborough-owned open space. And kind of the line we're thinking is right around in the center line of that stream. To the south would be all open space owned by the homeownership association. Everything to the north of that would be owned by the Town of Scarborough. I think that makes sense to some degree. It's similar to a lot of other subdivisions when we grant land back to the town after the subdivision, you know, when we're getting to the end of it. It's very similar to that. With that, the remainder of the comments we received were very, you know, technical, very simple to address, and I'd offer it back to the Board for any questions.
All right. Thank you.
Did you help with public comments on this item previously, yes, sir?
Okay. I think what I could do is turn this over to the Board at this point and ask Mr. McGee, our voting member this evening.
I guess, just real quick to clarify, the easements you have going through the properties and how many drains are through there? They're cleanouts, correct? Is that the purpose of those easements?
What they are is in order to use the low-impact development technique of picking up the water as it runs off the roofs, we're using drip-edge filters. It's basically crushed stone that runs through a filter to an underdrain. In order, the site is relatively flat. In order to pick up all those, that clean water and discharge it, we had to run a, basically a drain line that collects all those underdrains from all the houses and discharge it to a point where the grade drops off enough that we can daylight that pipe.
Okay. And that is all homeownership association responsibility?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's pretty much the extent of my questions thus far.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Ogles?
I'm very confused. Okay, October 10 letter from Jay. There was a note which may have been addressed already, forgive me if it is. There was a, on page two, there was a comment on street setback. And it says, "Note S11 is the Town's standard note of leaving the no buffer, no disturbed buffer areas, however, there does not appear to be any no disturbed buffers shown." And the answer is, "Note S11 has been removed because no no disturbed buffer is proposed."
Correct.
There's going to be no no disturbed buffers here.
Correct. It's being accomplished, there's no need for a no disturbed buffer. It's being accomplished with open space.
With open space. Okay. And this is going to be in open space, this is very clearly, everybody knows, you don't want to cut trees, I mean...
Correct. Yeah, there'll be, as part of the homeownership association documents, it'll be what you can do in the open space and what you can't do. The open space is meant for passive and active recreation, and it's meant for stormwater treatment, and that's it.
Okay. Sometimes this works really easily and sometimes it doesn't. So I'm just putting it out there that this is a lot of houses clustered, not a lot of houses, it's a very close clustering of houses. And I think that that open space is going to be pretty intensely used, just because there's not much in the way of yards and you don't want to let the street play if you're a kid, so why not? It's just open space. Just want to make sure that it's highlighted, that this is an important part of this subdivision is the use, the careful use of the open space. That's my only concern about this. Other than that, I have no problems. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I build on Ms. Ogles's question?
Absolutely.
Because I do think, I mean, that's one of the areas, you're sort of touching on one of the areas where staff still would like some further clarification. On the subdivision plan, they're still showing a 75-foot stream setback. And within that 75-foot stream setback, there's sort of a different, the DEP regulates things differently, and maybe I'll have the applicant sort of describe that more in detail than I will, but essentially from, the first 25 feet are more heavily regulated. From 25 to 75 feet, you can do more activities in that area. And in that area, right now, the applicant has proposed to put some of their stormwater facilities. And some in that 25 to 70-foot area is within at least two of the building envelopes. And it's just, I want to be sure there's clarity on the final subdivision plan about what type of uses the applicant is getting permitted through the DEP within that 75-foot setback. So I think that, maybe this would be a good time to jump on that point.
That's kind of what I'm looking for. Because there's so much happening with this land, so many different things happening.
Yeah. So as part of our permitting process through the DEP, we have three layers of permits that we're going after. The first part is, Jay mentioned, there's layers from 0 to 25 feet.
No dis, that's no disturb.
There's no disturb, no touch, that's off limits. The 25 to 75 feet, there's activities allowed provided you do certain things. You're careful with erosion control, that sort of thing. That's all permitted through the permit-by-rule process, which we have submitted for. The second permit we're looking for is the Natural Resource Protection Act permit, the Tier One for our wetland fill. That's been filed for the, both the wetlands that we're filling on the entrance roads. So that's been filed. And then the third permit is the DEP stormwater permit, which we've also filed, and that's to, because we're disturbing more than an acre of land, and we have more than 20,000 square feet of impervious area, we have to show how we're treating stormwater. So there's restrictions with each one of those permits that will be part of this approval. Because we can't come back for final approval until we have all those permits in hand.
Okay. I just think it's very complex and it's, I want to, I'm not sure how I'm going to say this. This is new to us, a situation like this. Many of these people, I would think, are going to be perhaps first-time homeowners. And this is not an easy environment. This has got a lot of complicated things going on at land use-wise. So I'm just going to want to make sure that the developer has some kind of really good system in place for educating everybody who is going to be part of this community.
I can tell you, as owners, we were just talking with the developer from Habitat for Humanity, as a Habitat for Humanity owner, you have to go through a training session where you actually school, you put sweat equity into the house, you have to work on other houses. So there's a lot of that education process that happens through Habitat.
Okay. That makes me feel better. So they'll actually be out there working on the land and they'll see what it is firsthand. Okay. I feel better.
And I do think that if the Board does feel comfortable with the preliminary plans, moving forward to final, staff's expectation would be that the notations on the plans are enhanced to spell out. I think there's a note right now, references, rightfully so, that DEP permit is pending. I think it would be helpful to have that note spelled out. We have stormwater permit XYZ number, you know, layout, the permit numbers. This type of activity is allowed within the 25-foot setback. This type of activity is allowed.
Exactly. That's why it caught my eye. I mean, there's got to be no disturbed buffers, but it actually is a matter of definition.
Yep.
And whose definitions.
Exactly.
And I don't, you know, it gets very complex. Let's make it easy.
It is complex, and I think, you know, through the process, we can be sure that's clarified in this.
Great. I'm all done. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Mr. Mazer?
Yeah, a couple of things, and I'm still a little confused, but Lee, work with me. What about easements? There was some question the last time this was brought up about easements between the homeownership association and the town.
It's, how do I put this carefully? Based on the discussion Jay and I had today, depending on the ownership, as you know, if the open space is owned by the homeowners, the homeowners can't give themselves an easement over their own land. They already have the rights to it. They own it. So by that definition, there's going to be easements, some easements to the Town of Scarborough. There's going to be some easements to the homeowners to have rights to get across the lots, but not necessarily the open space. Long and short of it, by the time we get to final, we're going to have that resolved and be clearly spelled out.
Okay. So it hasn't been totally spelled out.
At this point, not yet.
So I'm not way off in never, never land. Parking. I guess I missed that. How's that now stand?
The dark brown area that we show, we've allowed parking for two vehicles, and then there's access along that kind of light gray area to the trails to get into the back of that property. The discussion was that this doesn't need to be a gigantic trailhead parking area, that two parking spaces should be enough. If somebody's in there looking to get access to that, there's always that other trailhead parking at the end of the cul-de-sac on Saratoga Lane.
Okay. And I know I read it in here, but for comment, street width, heavy emergency vehicles width of the area, that was another issue that came up, street width.
I thought we'd resolve that at the last meeting, but we went to 22-feet width, which is slightly wider than what's been allowed on other projects with the Cape Cod basically curbing that allows easily for cars to get up on the side if they need to. It's different than, we talked about the 20-foot wide with the vertical curb.
That's what I was referring to.
Right. This is 22-feet with Cape Cod curbing.
And our Public Safety Department has weighed in, they're comfortable with the proposed design.
Thank you.
That is what Public Works.
Let's see, the setback we talked about, the easement, setback, open space, which has been discussed, DVP permits. I'm all done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Mazer, Mr. DuPont.
The only I've got, the next step, we certainly want to see the homeownership association covenants clearly, so we can understand that language. Other than that, I'm okay.
All right. Thank you, John. Mr. Fellowes?
Thank you. Yeah, I just amplify what John just said about the documents. And beyond that, I think the key items needing clarification for final have been pretty well identified, so I don't really have anything to add.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
I guess, Lee, the one thing that I don't know that I've ever seen, and I'm not exactly sure how you're going to do this, but there are at least three different lots, Lot 7, Lot 8, and I believe Lot 13, where you have an easement going through a building envelope. How do you do that?
What we do is just trim the building envelope to where the easement is, because the easement line would be more restrictive, so basically the building envelope shrinks to where that easement is.
But then you've got building envelope behind the easement in some cases, or...
Oh. Well, I think from a practicality standpoint, you have to look at each one of those case by case and say, is there anything that you could even put back there? Does it make sense? Or do you just truncate it altogether and say that's just not a buildable area and keep all the building envelope contiguous?
I, that I concur with. So I guess what I'm saying is it just seems weird that we would have on the plan, we're showing a building envelope where you don't ever have any intentions of a building.
Right. So what we'd do is, in that case, we'd trim it and make sure that it's just one contiguous building envelope and clean that up so that it's clear.
And it'll be on...
It'll be on the final.
The only caution I might put into that, because I can definitely appreciate where you're coming from, Mr. Chairman, on that point, that's one I hadn't thought of. But one thing I do want to just be cognizant of is if a property owner wishes to put a shed on their property, and the subdivision plan identifies that back triangle as being a location where you couldn't put a building, they may not, they would come to our code officer, and our code officer would, it becomes difficult when we don't, when lots don't just follow our standard zoning ordinances. So I can appreciate your concern about sort of the overlapping, if you will, of an easement area in a building envelope, but it may get more complicated, quite frankly, for the code officer and future property owners if we start to become too specific per lot, if you sort of catch my...
And I guess that's where it's going, on case by case, because that one with the big triangle in the back, there's definitely room to, I mean, you could even put a garage back there, a detached garage. There's probably room enough for it.
Yeah. Lot 8 clearly has that. I guess my concern is more on like Lot 7 and Lot 13, where I want to make sure that somebody doesn't build on it.
Yeah.
Because it is the easement.
Yeah.
And it's harder to define that, given the building envelope that's shown on the drawing.
Yes.
That's my point.
Understand that.
More so than the one that you're referring to. So that was, I guess, my concern, other than what we're seeing. I understand what, you know, moving around the open space and what you're trying to do and trailhead parking and assuming that we get the DEP permitting that you've put in for, all of that stuff just all seems to kind of add up. And if we add notes of clarification and stuff that we've talked about on the setbacks, then I think that brings us to about where we want to be.
Right.
Chairman?
Yes.
One more. Street lighting out towards the main route. I didn't see anything on the plans that I had. Is there intention for a streetlight out there?
There is an intention for a streetlight at the intersection of Broad Turn and this road. Yes, it'll be a Cobra Head style.
Didn't see it down here, that's all.
Yeah.
Got one more thing.
Yes.
This might be more for staff. Is the 20-foot easement for the cleanouts and stuff, is that standard? I mean, could it be smaller? Could it be 12 feet?
It's going to be to the homeownership association, the town is, so I think that was one of the comments we had, it was referenced to be to the town or to the home. The town wants no part of these. These are private easements.
I can tell you where we got 20 feet from.
So.
It's, you know, assume five or six feet for a trench box, and then assume a one-to-one slope up, and the pipe is buried five feet down. So if you do the quick math, if it's down five feet, five feet on either side, you've got 16, 18 feet.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Just clarification on your point. How did that get left? Are we going to just leave the lots as they are presented on this plan?
All right.
With the easement question to be taken up at the time of construction?
I think Lot 8, there'll be some defining there in terms of two separate building envelopes, but I think on Lot 7 and Lot 13, if I'm reading into this, he's going to change it so that the building envelope isn't shown as part of the easement.
Okay. So that'll be created before you come back?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Anything else? All right then, I'd like to move to approve the preliminary plan of Foster Farms subdivision two as presented. Final plan set shall address comments raised by staff, peer reviewers, and the Planning Board. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second? Thank you, Mr. DuPont. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And I show that to be unanimous.
Thank you.
Our next item this evening, Waterhouse Acres subdivision. Richard Waterhouse requests a preliminary review for a three-lot subdivision off West Beach Bridge Road. Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you just identified, this is a, an application for a three-lot subdivision off of West Beach Bridge Road. The underlines, or the zoning in this area is RF zoning. And given the characteristics of the site, the applicant is before you for a conservation subdivision, with a conservation subdivision layout, which essentially means that at least 50% of the land needs to be maintained as open space. And the lots are allowed to be instead the standard 80,000 square feet with 200 feet of frontage. They may be 30,000 square feet with 100 feet of frontage. Again, as Board members may recall, this item was on your agenda at the last meeting. The applicant requested to be tabled in advance of this meeting so they could respond to some staff comments. Let's see, in terms of layout, really the major question staff has to do with the proposed 15-foot easement that sort of is on the perimeter of the open space and Lot 3, I believe it is, just really wanting to better understand the intent and purposes around that and have some discussion around that as well. Outside of that, I guess we had one other question, and it's really an academic point, but just for point of clarity and the record. I just need to understand if, as Board members may recall, in the RF, there's certain triggers that require a conservation subdivision design, such as having an acre more of wetlands on site. If you're disturbing 4,300 square feet of wetlands, and there's three or four other triggers. And it wasn't clear in the submission if the applicant approached any of those triggers or if this is an elective subdivision. The applicant's narrative refers to it as an elective subdivision. Either way, as I said, it's really sort of an academic exercise, because it's an elective subdivision, they're only required to have 40% of open space. If it's required, they're required to have 50% of open space. They're proposing about 60% of open space. Again, I'm only really flagging the question for a point of clarity and the record. But, so outside that, I think that's what I have for the Board at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chase, and good evening.
Good evening. My name is Matthew X from Cibago Technologies, and I'm representing Richard Waterhouse on this subdivision. Richard is here this evening, if you have any direct questions for him as well. Some of you may remember, this was presented to the Planning Board several years ago, I believe in 2006, for a large subdivision. And there's certainly a potential for a future subdivision out back. But we're basically looking at conserving the area, and we did look at it originally as being an elective subdivision. And our last submission did have a little bit smaller area shown, and we'd done some new calculations based on the comments by the planning staff. And it may be a required subdivision, or a required conservation subdivision now rather than elective. We first looked at being an elective, but certainly we're well above the standards for required as well. So we can certainly change that on any language that does show it as elective in any future application. Basically, this is a 74-acre parcel overall, and we're looking at basically dividing nine and two-thirds acre parcel off and breaking it into... Mr. Waterhouse lives in the house in the middle lot on the subdivision, Lot 2, and is basically looking at dividing off and creating two new residential house lots. In the previous subdivision plan, or the plan from several years ago, it's basically a road design coming up here and looping back and accessing property... a road design coming up here and looping back and accessing property over here with a secondary road going up that way. To meet the town's design standards for a road, it's a fifty-foot right-of-way requirement, but with the road standards, it is very common to have a fifteen-foot easement on both sides of proposed roads for any grading that needs to extend beyond it, or utilities such as transformers, not knowing where CMP would need the transformers and such, we basically just are reserving that fifteen-foot strip for any needed grading or utility such as transformer. This is the subdivision later this evening that you'll be seeing, South Coast Community Church. I was just looking at that. That has fifteen-foot easements on both sides of its proposed road. Although we're not proposing any road as part of this one, we did want to reserve that right for the future, so it is encompassing Lot three as well as the open space, which is going to be commonly owned between all three. Certainly, it's easier to preserve that right now than after you sell the lot. So when the lots are sold, they're reserving that right now for that possible future road. That was one of the comments they had. So I think that, I think that Jay did a pretty good introduction to the subdivision, and we're certainly here to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay. It is our policy that when an item comes in front of us, as this one has, that we offer an opportunity for public comment. If there's anybody here from the public who would like to make comment on what they've heard or seen so far this evening, we would welcome them to approach the podium. Please state their name and address for the record, and we ask that you try to keep your comments to five minutes or less if possible. If anybody would like to make a public comment, please do so at this time. Seeing none, I will turn it over to the board and ask Ms. Ogleson if she'd like to pick it up.
It would be so helpful to me if I had a map that showed me where on Beach Ridge Road, this piece of property. Show me. Ah, there it is. Cranberry, oh, Cranberry Pine.
Down on the left.
Yep. So, looking at the map that was just pointed out to me, does Mr. Waterhouse essentially own, I'm trying to figure out...
Seventy-four acres.
Seventy-four acres beyond what we're seeing here.
No, the remaining land will be about sixty-five acres.
Okay.
It is highlighted in the darker line, his entire parcel.
This is the parcel, okay.
The darker line in the location map area is the overall parcel.
Yep.
I would ask that if you leave the podium, would you please grab the hand mic?
[laughing]
For the benefit of all of those who are watching from home.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, because so many people do. Do we know that, as Jay said, it doesn't much matter, but is this a choice that you, I'm just curious, is this just...
It was our original choice to do a conservation subdivision.
It was.
To try and preserve the area around the stream.
Okay.
It may have triggered to be a requirement, but we're well above, there's a forty percent requirement for elective.
Yep.
Fifty percent requirement for required. We're at sixty-one percent.
Right. I was just curious. Okay, so the open space is anything above the yellow?
Yes.
Including all of the setbacks around the river, around the stream?
All of the, yeah, all of the green is wetland, the stream is blue.
And then...
The whole area is...
And this is going to be owned by the homeowners association?
Going to be owned by the three-incoming, yes.
Yep. And there will be an association, right? To manage that open space?
Yes, with restrictions certainly in their conservation easement.
Okay. I don't have anything right now. That'll take care of me for the moment.
Thank you. Susan? Mr. Manza?
Yeah, on the map, it says easements. What are those easements?
They're, each of the individual lots will have their own easement within the open space so that they can go put a picnic table or a chair to sit and watch the stream go by or have a picnic. It's part of the conservation easement that's listed in there. I believe they also listed having a hammock.
Okay. And again, from my thinking, which of the three lots does Mr. Waterhouse now live on?
The middle lot, Lot two.
The number two?
Yep. The house is shaded in gray on this plan up here.
I think that's all I have for right now.
Thanks, Ron.
I think some more.
Appreciate it. John?
I'm okay, except for we asked last time for some elevation so we could see the drainage towards these other lots, which we didn't have here.
We do have, we're showing the contours. It's up to the individual property owners as to where they're placing house lots, so I'm not sure where, you know, they may build back here, up front, so we can't do any proposed drainage. You know, any proposed drainage will certainly be reviewed by code enforcement and have to follow the standards. We're not proposing any change in grades at all within the open space. It would all be done within the individual lots themselves.
Okay. I think to your point, Mr. DuPont, our peer reviewer, Winter and Curran, was also looking for a little bit more, recognizing that, you know, there is going to be quite a bit of vegetative buffer remaining, but that we do need some type of indication in the record.
Absolutely.
So again, I think, you know, should the board be, this is a subdivision for preliminary review at this time, depending on how the board's comfort level on that item is, we can sort of consider...
Consider one of our last cases, it barely passed because we were concerned on drainage to the neighbors. Our concern that this project doesn't affect the abutters. So we really want to see that and maybe indicate where they're going to put the houses.
They could put the house anywhere in the white area shown up here, there's the building envelope. Basically, Mr. Waterhouse could build somewhere else within the white if he wanted to put something else in. But anywhere within the white, there would be a lot of construction. Being fair-sized lots still, not knowing where any potential owners are going, the lots are sloping back towards the stream. There's a very large buffer area along the stream between the seventy-five-foot setback and the property lines even, so there's certainly a buffer area between the proposed, the proposed two house developments and the stream. That's all within the open space. So there's a considerable buffer area.
Okay.
And it is sloping back towards the stream, not towards the abutters.
Would you like to see that on the next submission?
So on the same topic, I've never heard of not having anything said until the lot is sold and the house lot, the site is chosen, and then we do.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, to, you know, I'm not a civil engineer, so I don't want to speak for what our peer reviewer would look for, and certainly if there's questions, I would put the applicant's engineer directly in touch with our peer reviewer. But I do think, just in my conversations with the peer reviewer, it is really just having the applicant articulate for the record the type of discussion we just had, because stormwater, again, these are large lots, there is a large undisturbed buffer area that's going to remain between the edge of the lots and the stream, but that evidence wasn't described in writing in the record.
Okay.
So to your point, you know, we don't envision this being a full, you know, stormwater analysis that we might see where there's a pipe outlet, per se.
Right.
But it is...
This is just a preliminary presentation, preliminary review. We're not going for preliminary approval tonight, are we?
You could do, you know, there's a two-step process for subdivisions. There's preliminary review and approval.
Right.
And final review and approval, depending on the board's comfort level, you could provide preliminary tonight.
Okay.
With condition, or you could...
No, I understand.
Ask for more evidence.
Thank you.
At the discretion of the board, certainly.
John, you all set?
Yes, sorry.
Corey?
Thank you. Quality of my plan copy here is not great, and I can't really see yours that clearly from here in terms of some of the details. Could you just confirm for me that, as it's designed right now, the conservation subdivision plan doesn't have any wetlands on private property?
There are wetlands on private property. You can see they're highlighted in green right here, that's the buffer area around them, and there's a culvert here that has gone up over the years, I believe, that's created a small wetland area out front here. You can see that they were proposing a buffer area around that as well. So we're not proposing to impact any wetlands as part of this.
Okay. I appreciate that you don't plan to impact or disturb it, per se, but generally speaking, the board has always tried to avoid having wetland on private property at all, because it, things happen over time, and I'm feeling our chairman might have a little more to add on that when we get to him. But I, and I know we're preliminary, but that seems, you know, at this stage, like kind of a potential threshold question.
It is somewhat limited. I mean, obviously, this one needs to remain on private property, and we are somewhat limited here, but we are providing a twenty-five-foot buffer, no build, no disturb buffer within that zone.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you could do about that one in the front. It was a tough one. This is a question maybe more for staff or potentially peer review. Have there been any potential concerns or questions raised around sightlines for pulling out of any of these properties, onto what sort of a, not a main road, but it's a feeder-type road? It's not like some of the other, kind of similar to one of the projects...
Yep.
We saw last time where you have people going directly onto a travel road as opposed to having a subdivision that's kind of set back from the road?
Nope. This one is kind of ideally positioned. It's on, you can see there's a slight curve to the road, we're on the outside of the curve, so when you're pulling up to the outside of the curve, you can see both ways down the curve much better. It's got significant sight distance.
There haven't been any issues raised by...
Okay.
Yep.
All right. I think that's all I've got right now.
All right, thank you. Nick?
I think going back to the wetlands issue, I think, I mean, Mr. Waterhouse has clearly lived on a piece of private property with wetlands on it for a number of years, I feel. So what I would recommend, just as, in a suggestion, I guess, would be maybe to have those wetlands remain as part of his property, knowing full well that they've been on his property for the time being. Is there a way to make sure that a new owner doesn't come in and have wetlands on their new property, because you're creating a new lot? And that kind of will go hand in hand with my next question, which is, is there any specific reason why the first lot is shaped the way it is?
They're required to have a one-hundred-foot frontage all the way back to the setback. We're providing a building envelope out front that certainly is above a one-hundred feet, a hundred and one feet of frontage, and then it's narrowing up due to a septic system that exists on Mr. Waterhouse's property, that's serving his existing house, so rather than relocate the septic system, you know, we project that someone would build in the wider area out front or the wider area out back. I wouldn't assume that someone would build in the middle, but someone could if they chose to, but presuming that they would build in the front area or the back area of the property.
We're in RF?
Yes.
Correct. Septic, twenty-five-feet setback from a property line? Is that, that's probably not a fair question to ask on this lot.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't know that there's a setback requirement for septics. I, I'm not entirely certain of that. I know there's sep, you know, separation, disinterruption wells and the like, but I don't know that there's property line setbacks necessarily for septics or leach fields.
I ask because I know there is one admitted for that I'm dealing with currently. So, it goes to the point of that being so narrow, but I guess you're saying that the, how far away is that septic tank on the private property located away from that property line?
It's approximately twenty-five feet to the fifteen-foot setback, and it's approximately ten feet beyond that.
About twenty-five feet away from the line?
Approximately.
And do you know what the distance between the shortest two points there is on that lot one? I'm going to call it the belt.
Between this area?
Yeah. And you know what that distance is?
I'm not sure of that distance. I can scale it for you if you'd like.
It appears to be narrower than the frontage, and the frontage is ninety-three feet. So I just kind of wanted to get an idea of how, how much that narrows.
Approximately sixty-five feet scaled?
So if you had a house, I'm going to ask you to do some math real quick. Sorry about this. Um, you've got a hundred and thirty feet, so you've got about two hundred feet to the belt, is that what you're saying? My quick estimate here, you've got a seventy-foot, a turn, that's a hundred and thirty foot.
What is it, a hundred and thirty feet?
That's the line here. The lot line between one and two, up to that, you know, the narrowest point is what I'm trying to calculate. If I, what I'm saying is that you have a house on the front side, all right, and then you're going to put in a septic system and a well, I imagine. There's no public water out there?
No public.
Yeah. So you have a septic system and a well, and you're going to have a bunch of setbacks for that. Are you going to be able to get a house lot into the front of that?
Certainly. I mean, the lot is several hundred feet deep. You could put the well near the back, you could put the septic behind the house. I mean, there's certainly ample room. It's a reasonable-sized lot.
I think it's probably going to end up being homeowner choice, not necessarily a logistical choice.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, it really is the homeowner's choice as to whether they want to build out front or out back. Both are nice building envelopes.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Once again, I'm seeing things that I guess I'm not sure I've seen before.
Yes.
There's some really unique things that are happening here that just kind of beg to have a few questions asked. The first one has to do with the fifteen-foot easements, I'll call it on the north side and on the east side, and I understand your description of the width of the road and the ability to maybe have that fifteen-foot buffer, but given the amount of property that you have, why would you create an easement and not just move the property line by fifteen feet and not have to have an easement?
Glad you asked that. If you do that and you construct a road in the future, then who owns the fifteen-foot strip? So that becomes an issue for the future. We're trying, you know, we're trying as planners, as you're the planning board and planning staff, to plan ahead. It's very common in Scarborough to have the fifteen-foot easements on both sides of the road. So if we put the fifteen-foot easement in this description so that we can reserve that right for future use, we can put the fifty-foot right-of-way adjacent to it, which then could be conveyed to a homeowners association or the town, and the easement could be conveyed to either the homeowners association or the town or the latter subdivision, if it is ever developed. It may not be developed. It may be conveyed to someone else, it may be whatever. We're just trying to reserve that right in case there's a subdivision in the future. It could be ten years or a hundred years away.
Okay.
We just want to reserve that right. You can't go back and try and get a fifteen-foot easement from someone in the future.
Okay.
And if you do bump that back fifteen feet, then it becomes an issue as to who would own that fifteen-foot strip, because that would be a lot in between the right-of-way and this subdivision.
Just, why, why would it be a lot? Why wouldn't it just be part of the property that the fifty-foot is part of?
Then it would be an eighty-foot wide right-of-way, which the town may or may not wish to accept in the future. The standard is a fifty-foot right-of-way with fifteen-foot easements on both sides.
It's actually typically ten-foot easements on each side. And I believe, so that the space that, the sliver of remaining land, I believe, is seventy-five feet wide without the easement. Is that, I think I, when I scaled that off, is that what you left?
The strip of land on the...
Yep, coming off of West Beach Ridge Road. When I scaled it off, I think it was around seventy-five to eighty feet.
It is roughly that width.
So...
Which would allow for fifteen feet on one side.
Right. Typically, we have a fifty-foot wide right-of-way with ten-foot wide easements on either side, which is seventy feet. So I think that's where the town engineer and planning staff's comments both suggested we're not really seeing the need for this additional fifteen feet where the neck, if you will, that's left coming off West Beach Ridge exceeds seventy-five feet, where we typically will look for only seventy. You're already exceeding what we typically need, so...
We're also looking at the turning radiuses to get in, as we're showing a radius on this corner of this lot. We do have an existing fire tank on this side, so we're trying to avoid encroaching into that area for the future. So this, basically, this is the design of the previous road, and we also do have a stream to cross in the future if it is ever developed. That stream crossing will also need some extended width to get over that, you know, reasonable depth as you're crossing that, and that... And that is why we're looking at it. The previous subdivision showed 15 feet on each side, and that's why we went with a 15 now, just to accommodate the grading that that subdivision showed on it.
Okay. Sure. All right. So, my second question regarding easements is the three easements that you have near the stream. And I appreciate the fact that you've got the stream buffer going on, but the easements, as I think you mentioned earlier, were- they're quite a bit bigger. So, who does the easement go to?
Okay, basically, the entire open space is owned in common by the three owners. Each owner has its own easement so that they can put their picnic table or chair in their area. They can't go into the other areas and such. There's a path proposed on this side to allow access for all the owners on the opposite side of the stream, as well as any future development would have a path easement going through the open space, somewhat recreational. That's the purpose of that.
So, we have a restricted easement that's basically planned for a family.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Each piece of property would have its own restricted easement within the open space just for their family. So, I guess my question would be, would that be considered open space?
No.
And should that be part of the open space calculation if only one family has access to it? Yeah, the- I agree this is unique. When I looked at the zoning ordinance, there's nothing in the ordinance that talks about who needs to have access to the open space. As the applicant said, there's the ownership- the type of activities within the open space needs to be established, and they're meeting one of those. It's to conserve natural areas to be undeveloped, so they're sort of meeting that threshold. Then the next statement in the- in the language is about who owns the open space. It needs to either be owned in common by the homeowner's association or go to a third-party land trust or something to that effect to hold the conservation. But the language does not say anything about who can or cannot access that open space. So, I looked at this. I thought it was unique as well. I sort of pored over the language, but I didn't see anything in my view of it that was contrary to what the ordinance provisions allow. But certainly-
We basically showed that after discussing it with Jay.
I'm sorry?
We basically showed it that way after discussing it with Jay to allow, you know, basically-
Okay.
If someone builds a home right here, you know, they may not want someone right here putting their- a picnic table or something. So, we tried to restrict the area right behind theirs. They're all restricted to the open space requirements, but if they want to put a picnic table or something in that small area, they could do that.
Mr. Chair, that was my opening question, and I'm still just confused now about-
Well, I understand what he's saying. It's just that's very different from anything I've seen in nine years. So, Susan?
I don't like it. I don't like it.
I agree with Susan.
Because it never has been done. It doesn't mean that I don't like anything that hasn't been done, but this is owned- this is owned by three people. If you can't get three people to decide where they're gonna put a picnic table without starting a civil war, you got a problem. I think that by putting an easement on here for each lot is- I can just- no, I don't want to spend a whole lot more time on this. I'm not ready to give it preliminary approval, I'll tell you that. I mean, I want to get the engineers involved in this and see what they're gonna come up with, but it just seems like it's a setting of precedent that could be three people with this much space. It might work. I mean, who cares? What are we gaining? I don't understand what we're gaining here. We got- we got open space all over the town of Scarborough. We bought thousands of acres of it probably that are owned in common by people, and this has never been- people just somehow or another share their open space. They don't put easements in the middle of open space. I just don't- I would like it to be looked at again. I don't want to make that decision. I'm very uncomfortable with it, and as a result, I'm not comfortable with voting- I'm not vote- I'm giving preliminary approval to this. There's too many questions about it.
I understand.
I'll echo some of the sentiments here, which is by restricting it, you're essentially making it private property without the ownership value to it.
That's the way it is.
Which is, it's skirting our conservation. You know, the purpose of a conservation subdivision, the intent of it, is being violated, in my opinion. It's an end around.
To me, it's- I mean, by doing that, you're restricting access for anybody else to access that open space, and I'd kind of like to get some kind of a- The one thing I'll- and I can appreciate the board's position on it, because this is one that I struggled with as well, but I'll just point out, and, you know, if I think where I heard where the chair was going, wanting to have a second legal review of this, that's perfectly at the board's discretion. But I will point out that there's different provisions in Section 7A that speak to the use of open space. One of them that the applicant's proposing is for the conservation of wetlands, forestlands, meadows, and other natural areas, and it needs to meet the following. I sort of spoke through those about. Then the next one is about open spaces to accommodate passive and active recreational space. And so, I think there are- there are instances, and most of the instances that we do see, the open space is open to all the property owners, but-
Maybe there's a distinction between- maybe there's a distinction between open and common.
Yep.
And I guess-
So, that might help.
Yeah, that distinction is one, and the other question that I have is, given the intent of what the easement is all about, should it really be part of the open space calculation?
We didn't get an answer to that. That's a good question.
Because if- if it's deemed that it's not part of the open space calculation, that changes everything. That's a big chunk of property that's going under easement. I mean, it's half of the open space.
I really think we do.
The applicant certainly asked for a legal opinion if the board is so inclined.
I just-
Please.
I just-
It's very unusual, and I guess I just want to make sure that we're not starting something that we wish we hadn't.
I think we're-
Or shouldn't have.
Fair enough.
And I guess my final comment, consistent with what Mr. McGee was saying, I would really like to see the- and I believe that Mr. Fellow's made a comment as well, but again, given the amount of property that we have here, I would love to see the wetland area that is considered, I think, part of Lot Number One to be part of the open space and not part of the private lot. I understand we've got a situation on Lot Number Two. It's been there for years and years and years, but again, we work very, very hard to try to keep wetland areas off private property because they disappear. And while I know that other towns and communities think it's fine, we prefer that that's not the case. And this is a situation where I don't think that it has impact on the saleability of the land or anything else, so that, you know, it certainly doesn't impact the building space or the ability to get to the building space. So, I think that can easily be made part of the open space and taken off private property, and I would like to see it that way.
I certainly see that we could do that. It would alter the shape of that lot, certainly.
Okay.
I agree.
And that's my last comment, and I am also in the same position, I guess, in terms of any kind of approval this evening. I really do want to try to get a legal response to the question, because I don't want to approve something that potentially could change the open space sizing.
Thank you.
It may not have any impact on it whatsoever, and we may see this again in the future, and that it is what it is, but I just want to feel a little more comfortable with it.
I think it's legitimate to do that. I mean, you've been on the board for nine years. I was on it forever, you know? You'd never see anything, and then all of a sudden, it pops up. It's not that it's a bad thing that it's coming up, but I think that it- that we just need to make sure that we didn't make a decision that ultimately is gonna create a problem.
Yeah.
So, let's just take a little more time and look at it.
This is a unique- a unique one.
Yes, very.
So, I just want to make sure we get it right. Any other comments from the board? Any other questions from the applicant?
Just on page two of my application letter, I do have a statement on there regarding drainage from my engineer. The subdivision proposed no infrastructure construction, only the development of two house lots. The overall drainage plan consists of upgrading the site away from the foundation of the two lots as the existing topography slopes away from West Beach Ridge Road. Vegetated twails will intercept the runoff from the front yard and direct it around the sides of the homes to disperse it via sheet flow through the retained wooded open space. I'm not sure really what else you want for engineering. We can't design the lot, the individual lots, not knowing where they're going to place the homes. So, you all had questions on the grading, but we are providing a significant buffer on the back of the lots. It is sloping back towards the stream, and without designing the individual house lots and restricting them to be, as we're showing on this subdivision plan, I think that really needs to go before the building inspector when they're looking at the individual house placement.
Yeah, I guess that's my question for staff, if you will, is when the subdevelopment is approved and a building permit is being sought, does code enforcement look at any kind of stormwater runoff that's- Yeah, I think I would- not to get into what our code enforcement officer does or doesn't look to at building permit time, what I'd like to sort of focus on is the comment from Woodron and Kern, our peer review civil engineers, when they reviewed the applicant's submission, including the statement that was provided. Woodron and Kern basically left with the remaining question of that the applicant should know any stormwater buffer areas on the plan along with associated clearing restrictions. The applicant should clarify how the buffer will be identified and delineated in the field. So, I guess as with- as is customary with most our- with all our applications, when the applicant does resubmit for the board, we will have- we would expect a response to that comment, and if they had questions in preparation of that comment, I'd certainly gladly set up a meeting between the applicant's engineer and our civil engineer so that there isn't confusion moving forward. But I think it's a fairly standard procedure.
Okay. I think that if the peer review engineer and the town engineer and the applicant's engineer are in agreement, that's good.
Okay, I have some mine.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the board? All right. Our next item this evening is Waterstone Scarborough LLC requests a site plan review for development of Lot 7 at Scarborough Gallery subdivision. Mr. Chase? Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an application that the board, may recall, has seen through sort of the winter months and into spring, maybe even into early summer. The board spent a meeting or two or three looking at the specific site elements of this application, and then I think the last meeting we had spent a lot of time really on the architecture. This is- I'm sorry, let me back up for just a moment. The lot in question is the last lot, last undeveloped lot in the Scarborough Gallery subdivision. This lot butts Walmart, is across the street from Lowe's. Board members will recall, we did a- the board provided a sort of sketch plan review when they were looking to do preloading for the site. And folks from the community are probably familiar with the site at this point, given the excess materials that have been on the site, so they're probably wondering what's going on. So, as I said, the board really reviewed the details of this back in the spring and summer. Ostensibly got to the point where you were very comfortable with the site plan. Again, we can go over the details as the board sees fit, but the applicant wants to take some time since the planning board, one, they were still working through their DEP permitting process, and since planning board approvals only last for a year, I think they want to be sure that their preloading was far enough along prior to coming to get final approval. So, we provided you some staff comments. As I said, for a project this size, our staff comments are pretty minimal because we had worked through a lot of the issues over the last three, four, or five times we had seen this. Really, the two outstanding items, as staff recalled it when we last saw this, were there were questions with regards to the architecture on the, I guess I'll call it, the east face, the wall-facing Gallery Boulevard, and how that met the design standards in terms of storefronts facing public streets. And the other outstanding question was in terms of cart corrals. Outside of that, I believe we have ostensibly reviewed all the other site elements. And with that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Ms. St. Clair, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Nancy St. Clair with St. Clair Associates. Here tonight was Frank Quigley, who's just sitting down, who is the owner's rep for the applicant, and also I have Tim Tobin here, who is the architect. He's here to talk to you folks about the plans that you do see before you that have been prepared in order to address the comments that were last received from you folks. As Jay mentioned, we were last before you folks, actually in June, June 2nd, was our meeting with you at the last presentation, and that presentation really focused on architecture. And the board did have a couple of comments, a couple of additional items that they asked that we provide, and we're here tonight to speak about those items as well. But before Tim gets up and does his presentation, I did want to sort of bring you all up to speed as to where we are in the process. As Jay had mentioned, in the interim since meeting with you folks, we have gone through the amended site location review process with the Department of Environmental Protection. A permit has been received. It's been submitted to the town, so it is a complete process with regard to that. In that process, basically, the updates that were provided and their on-year plans that you have before you were really focused around some additional erosion sediment control measures for the site. The design didn't change. The layout didn't change. We still have the same configuration of the site and the buildings that was presented to you folks back in May of this year. And so, we just wanted to kind of give you a brief, you know, update as to what the changes were with the DEP. We are, as you know, the site is settling still. We are in the active preload process. That is moving forward as anticipated, and we are looking forward to be able- being able to start construction hopefully early in 2015. And so, closely monitoring that effort, our geotechnical consultants as part of the team, S.W. Cole. S.W. Cole has reviewed our plans, and based on the monitoring results, they have made a couple of recommendations with regard to some of the details, one of which is the pavement buildup, the thickness of the pavement in the standard duty pavement sections, and a couple of other items of note with regard to trenching. Nothing that affects the layout, nothing that affects the grading design or anything like that, but there were a couple of comments that we have received from them that we'll be integrating into our details for construction. So, with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Tim Tobin, who'll talk to you a little bit about the architecture, and then I'll circle back.
Hi, my name is Tim Tobin with Phase Zero Design. In the hearing in June 2nd, we talked about-
If you're gonna grab the hand mic and-
That's one.
Yep, that'd be great. Thanks.
We talked about the building architecture, and essentially, the board was focusing on, as was stated, is this elevation or the east elevation, east-facing elevation along the Gallery Boulevard, and what they felt was sort of some missing details in this end of the building. We've gone back and taken a look at that, and we added some of the piers that occur here along this area. It is the end of one of the largest stores in the area, and this is a loading bay. And we also carried some of the- some additional landscaping down, lower landscaping- And we also carried some of the, some additional landscaping down, lower landscaping. But on the wall, we've put this product called Echo Mesh, if you will. It attaches to the block and allows for vines to grow up and sort of soften the impact of the masonry along this elevation here. We had previously talked about the storefront side along the Gallery Boulevard, and then on the side that faces the Walmart parking lot, we added a few piers as well, along with lower planting. The other comment that was, within the, the board's commentary that we received, was the request for a cart corral, if you will. And we looked at what they had at Walmart and Lowe's, which is essentially the pipe rail things that they stick out in the parking lot, and didn't really, Waterstone didn't like that too much. So what we came up with was a design where we're grabbing the width of two parking spaces here, and we're going to bring out the curbing and landscape from these landscaped islands out, and essentially create a landscaped island that will hide those metal cart corrals that will be contained inside as a screen, if you will, rather than try to just stick this out in the parking lot somewhere. And that is essentially where we left it. We felt, or at least the reaction we got from the board last time was relatively favorable. If anyone would like these, I have extra copies. Would anybody else like one?
No, I'll just pass it down.
The landscaping that you see in there is the same landscaping that we are using on the islands and elsewhere on the site.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can we ask a question of him while he's up there, or do we want to wait until it's all...
Why don't we let them complete their presentation?
I'm pretty much done. If there's anything else you'd like me to address, I could certainly do it, but...
Okay. Nancy, you're all done?
Well, I just wanted to add, sorry. As I, it's probably well understood, we were hoping that the board would feel comfortable in granting approval tonight. We'd like to, you know, be able to have this approval. We do have everything from the permitting standpoint in place, and we'd like to be able to reach some certain thresholds with regard to contractual agreements that the applicant has in order to be able to move forward, recognizing that construction will start in the spring, that we would respectfully ask that the board consider granting approval tonight. So that's what I just wanted to add.
Let's see what the wishes of the board is.
She would like to go. Go ahead.
No, I just want, no, I don't have to go right now, but...
No, please.
Okay. The corral that we've just passed down?
Yes.
Okay. It's really kind of hard to figure out from this, what is it? This is a nice planting, plantings, which mimicking what's going to be on the aisle, on the, hmm, I don't do too well this time of night, the, the...
The vertical islands, or...
Yep. So what is, what is behind here? Is this a metal, a metal bar?
Yeah, it's been into Walmart or the, or the Lowe's parking lot.
So this is, how many, how many corrals are going to be behind here?
There'll be two rows.
Two rows?
Two vertical rows.
Okay. And there'll be one of these on each of the landscaping aisles?
There are, there are one, two, there are three. One here, here.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Okay. I like it, okay? I'm not trying to be difficult, but that doesn't seem like very many corrals for the parking lot that big.
Well, in tenant A, can't tell you the name of...
No, of course you can't, and I wouldn't ask you.
But it's a national furniture retailer, typically all the sales, they don't typically have shopping carts. You pick up anything that you buy, or it's delivered. Retail B is a national pet supply chain, and typically use a cart inside the store. They typically don't go out except for bigger things, so there might be a few.
I got you. Okay, as long as you're...
And then Retail D, they do have carts, but they don't have very many of them, so we just wanted to address the need for carts, but we don't think there's going to be very many others.
Well, you answered my question, because I was thinking this isn't very many, and the answer is we don't need very many.
It would be ten amount to two...
And the thing is, it's just corrals, so if somebody changes and they need to add corrals, you can add corrals, right? Okay. Looking at the landscaping, not landscaping, the elevations, exterior elevations, could you put that one back up again?
Sure.
So are you telling me that the far right on the west side, okay, west elevation, far right, is going to end up with the same sort of metal grid with vine plantings that I see on the east side?
We weren't planning that, as that faces the Walmart parking lot, and there's actually a substantial landscape buffer between the two lots, if you will. But since the opposite, the east end faces Gallery Boulevard, which, and it's a high visibility area.
I understand. I understand. I would like to just make a note to staff. I would like to have personally a landscaping sheet that I can actually read when they, when they come like this. You know, this is a small version. I'm the landscape lady. I can't make head and tail out of this because it's just crammed together, and I don't have any problems with it. I've seen it before, it's okay. This is just a staff. I don't know whether anybody else wants it, but would you make a note that when my packet goes out, I would like to have full landscape plan? Other than that, I don't have any real problems with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Okay.
You're going to refresh my memory. It has been a little while. Was there always an entrance on the east face of this building?
Mm-hmm.
There was? Okay. That was it. We proved to have a terrible memory. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Falls?
Yeah, I don't have any further questions. I appreciate that you added some interest to that facade on the east side, east facing side, and a whole lot to add at this point.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dupont?
I'm here, nothing aside, likes improvements, appreciate it. I'll just leave it there.
Okay. Mr. Mazur?
No comment, other than look forward to it.
I do have a question, and I'll stop. The far right, the front, north elevation, okay, there are, the building D is two entrances? You've got, you've got four buildings there, A and D, and you've got five...
This is one building, but it's a national retailer, with two separate...
Okay, that's what I needed to know. Two separate, one building. Okay, that's it.
Entrances within the facade.
Yep.
Once again, this is the night for new things to go on, but the most interesting cart corrals that I've seen...
I've ever seen.
Especially given kind of like a...
The corrals will be there, is that tubular frame cart corral?
Right.
We just didn't want to look at those in the parking lot.
Well, we don't want to look at them either.
I appreciate that. No, I'm saying, I do fully appreciate that, and I, you know...
Yes.
I give you a big thumbs up for being creative on a different way to approach a common eyesore. So I think that's really kind of an interesting way to do it, and I'm sure that members of this board may be suggesting something similar to that as we move on.
I think you may have started something.
So, yeah, you might have started something.
That's it.
Give me my next comment. You gave us an idea for the rest of the retailers, and they're going to hate us for it.
Yeah.
Or you, yes.
Remember the name, so that we can...
Yes, remember the name, yes.
And the second comment is, thank you for the upgrade to that, that east side. I think that's significantly better than what we were seeing before, and, you know, now I think that approach coming in off Muzzy Road will make, it'll be a lot nicer. So we appreciate that you listened and did something to improve that, so. If people are wondering why we really don't have many questions, we vetted this pretty well over, over the last year or so that it's been coming in front of us, although we haven't seen this in June 2nd. It was pretty well set to go with the exception of DEP and a couple of little minor items then, so if people are wondering why we're kind of zipping through this, that would be the reason. So I would like to move to approve the application of Waterstone Scarborough LLC under Chapter 405, the Town of Scarborough zoning ordinance, and Chapter 405B, the Town of Scarborough site plan review ordinance, with the following findings and conditions, findings. Waterstone Scarborough LLC proposes to develop property identified as Lot 7 of the Scarborough Gallery subdivision. The property is located within the V2 zoning district with frontage along Gallery Boulevard. The applicant proposes to develop a multi-building site consisting of approximately 106,362 square feet of multi-tenant anchor buildings with two satellite buildings, which are currently envisioned to include an approximately 4,872 square foot restaurant and retail space and approximately 2,248 square building. The development is proposed to occur in two phases. Phase one, consisting of the anchor tenant and all associated site elements. Phase two, consisting of the building details of the two small satellite buildings and their immediate surroundings. Planning board has reviewed the application and supporting documentation, and finds the proposed design of the site plan adequately addresses the site plan review ordinance requirements for site utilization and layout, internal vehicular movement, pedestrian ways, landscaping, stormwater management, lighting, architecture, signage, utilities, and storage. The planning board has reviewed the architectural details of the main anchor tenant building and finds that the building architecture and site layout are in compliance with the provisions of the design standards for Scarborough's commercial districts. Conditions. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall pay the traffic impact fees. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall pay the peer review fees. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall provide planning staff with a revised plan set to identify the location of the cart corrals and finalize details of the bus shelter pad. Prior to the issuance of building permit, the applicant must submit a letter of approval from the Scarborough sanitary district to the planning department. A pre-construction meeting is required before start of construction. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer and his contractor, the utility company representatives if applicable. The pre-construction meeting may be scheduled in coordinating with, coordination with the senior planner. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall execute and record the maintenance agreement as required by the post-construction stormwater infrastructure management ordinance, and development within phase two requires further planning board review and approval. Is there a second?
I second.
We have a second? Thank you, Mr. Mazur. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And I show that to be unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Mazur.
Thank you very much.
Our next item this evening, the planning board will conduct a public hearing to consider the site plan review application of the University of New England and Maine Army National Guard as part of the contract zoning procedure. Mr. Chase?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you just identified, this application is before the board as step four of 10 of the contract zoning process as laid out by our zoning ordinance. As planning board members will recall, about six weeks ago or so, board and council held a joint hearing on the proposed application for contract zone, at which time the council moved the item forward for planning board consideration. At this point in the review process, the planning board is charged with providing a preliminary review of the site plan review elements, ostensibly to ensure that the proposal is in compliance with the site plan review ordinance. This application is different from the other nine or so contract zones that the town has previously approved, in that in other, in all other applications and instances, the applicant was ostensibly ready to move forward with their project nearly immediately. With this project, as the applicant laid out in their narrative to the board with this submission and in the discussion with the council, is this project is some years away from development. Board members will recall that this, there's really two, the applicant's proposing part of the development to occur in SACO, that's where the access for the project will come, and where the, with the proposed plan, where the readiness center would be, which the applicant is expecting funding to be, hopeful for funding in, I think it's 2018. The Scarborough property is where they've identified where the vehicle maintenance shop would go, and at this time, the applicant, as I recall in their narrative, has stated they haven't yet secured the funding for. So really, it's an undefined timeframe as to when this may be built, but what the applicant wants to do is get through the process to ensure that the use would be allowed in Scarborough so they can go forward to try to get funding through Department of Defense. So it's a little different in that way, and I sort of give that background or preface for this reason, is that as staff thought through what the review process would look like, the direction that we've provided to date is that consideration be given to this in conceptual terms. Certainly, most projects we see that take years to develop, details change over a course of four to six or eight years, whenever this project may be built in terms of stormwater or actual building design. So I think conceptually, we want to have an understanding of how those elements will be treated. But in saying that, we do think that this part of the review process, what the board can really dial into, if you will, with the applicant, is really taking a look at the details to ensure that abutting property owners, that any adverse impacts to abutting property owners could be mitigated. So in terms of that, you know, the board may want to think about doing a more detailed review of the buffering and separation from the project from its residential neighbors in terms of vegetative landscaping, setting parameters for active development, if you will, sort of the edges of paving, light intrusion or spillover, ambient glow, if you will. I think another critical component for the board to think about is in terms of design standards. Do you want to make some form of recommendation to the council to consider through the contract zone process in terms of design standards? This is in the RF zone, so if, if the board's interested in having some type of architectural review implemented at the time of final review, the contract zone would be the place to ensure that occurs. Otherwise, the underlying zoning, the RF, doesn't require architectural review. So those are the types of elements that we've touched on in our comments and really focused our specific details on. And I'll just make note, really, you know, one of the, when we held the joint meeting, one of the comments that was raised was from the couple of the council members, and I believe planning board members echoed, a request to be sure that the application is reviewed by the Conservation Commission prior to going back to council for first reading. And so that, I've begun to work with the applicant and the Conservation Commission chairman to get this item on their November 10th agenda, if that's the timing the applicant seeks to move forward with. But that is a process we'll work forward towards to ensure that that occurs before it goes back to council for first reading. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I did want to make note that we did receive one letter, public comment letter from a Mr. Fairweather, and that has been provided... public comment letter, from a Mr. Fairweather, and that has been provided to Board members and is in the official record. Board members will have also received. We did ask Ward and Kern, our peer review civil engineer team, to weigh in, again, not on the details, because there isn't a detailed stormwater report, but just to weigh in on the general parameters. Are things heading in the right direction? You know, is their general outline for the way they would handle stormwater makes sense? And so, we have some commentary to that effect, but again, those are details that we can move forward through as time progresses, should this, shouldn't, if it gets Town Council approval through the contract zone process. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to the applicant. Good evening.
Thank you. My name is Alan Tebow. I'm the Assistant Vice President for Planning at the University of New England, and with me tonight are gentlemen from the National Guard. They are available to answer any specific questions about their program or how they would work on the site, if I'm unable to answer that. We also have in the audience our civil engineer from Site Design Associates, who can answer some of the more technical questions, should we have any of those that we need to address. It might seem a little strange that the University of New England is here presenting on behalf of the Maine Army National Guard. It's a long story, and I'll try to keep it short. Some of you may have heard that the joint meeting, but the University of New England owns two campuses, one in Bedford, one in Portland. Our Portland campus wraps around the National Guard site in Portland. We have a small road that goes from our upper campus to our lower campus, making our lower campus difficult to develop. So, many years ago, we approached the Guard and said, "If you're ever interested in divesting the property, we'd be interested in acquiring it." So, not too long ago, they came to us and said, you know, "Our building is in need of significant repair. We've requested and applied for funding to replace this building." So, they have two functions there. It's a readiness center and a field maintenance shop. So, they have money allocated for the readiness center. The proposal that we're bringing forward actually encompasses both of those functions. The first phase would be the readiness center, and that would be located in Saco. And the FMS would be located in Scarborough. So, what we're really addressing tonight is the FMS. The piece of land that we were able to find is, as shown here, this long linear piece. This is Route 1. This is the Saco-Scarborough line right here, and this is Curves, if you know where Curves is located. That's right here on the Saco side of the line. The two parcels put together is the Scarborough piece here in green and the Saco piece here in yellow. Curves is located here. This is Route 1, and you can see the municipal line is here. Eastview Drive, which currently terminates right after Curves, is here. In this project, it would be extended down and then connected down to Don Marie Drive in Besta Housing Development, is located here. So, you would actually have, this is an access point in Saco, and then you could actually come down Don Marie Drive and exit a little bit further to the south as well. And that is a controlled intersection, so there's a light there, so they'd be able to get in and out of there with big trucks with relative ease. The current zoning on the Scarborough piece is rural farmland, while the use of a FMS or a field maintenance shop is very similar to accepted uses. This is specifically not included or excluded, thus the need for the contract zone. It's very like a public works facility. It has service bays where they work on equipment, and it has offices associated with it, as well as other support spaces to operate the facility, mechanical spaces, storage areas, et cetera. Light green area is the total project site, and again, you can see the municipal line here going through, Route 1, Eastview Drive, Don Marie Drive, and then back up to Route 1, so you can see it in a little bit more context. The current zoning on the Saco piece, excuse me, is a contract zone that allows for this project to go forward. It is an accepted use in that. So, the readiness center could be constructed in there going through site plan. These two projects are going together, so we have to make sure that this piece of property could accommodate the FMS before we can go forward with the Saco portion of the work. This is a copy of the existing conditions plan that was submitted. And this is zoomed in a little bit more. Again, Route 1 is here. Eastview Drive is here. The municipal line, east to west, here. There is, and the abutter with the residence here, that's Mr. Fairweather's property. This is a vacant lot next to it. Underneath this area here on the Saco side, there's four or five different lots that are zoned for eating and drinking establishments, for financial institutions with drive-throughs. They could be business offices. A whole slew of different activities could happen in a municipal quasi-public uses as well. So, the zoning there is a business district, essentially. On the lot, there is a stream that runs from the Saco side and through the middle of the lot, and then drains back down to the Saco Marsh estuary system. There is a resource protection zone on the back end of the property here. There is some, there is a deer, a candidate deer wintering yard identified here from Inland Fisheries and Wildlife Mapping, and then there is a resource protection zone just off the property to the north. Generally, the site slopes from west to east down to the system here, so you can actually see the contours here, it's a nice even grade going across the site. We have received, we have asked for reviews and have received letters from the Department of Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry from the Natural Areas Program, and they have indicated that there are no rare botanical species on this piece of property. We've received a review from the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, that there are no threatened, endangered, or species of special concern located on this property. We have reached out to the Maine Historic Preservation Commission and asked them to provide us an updated letter. They have already reviewed the Saco development, and they've issued a letter saying that there are no historic features there. We have conducted site walks. The properties are very similar. We don't expect to have anybody find any historic, anything of historic concern there, so we're expecting to get that letter in hand shortly, and when we do, we will submit that letter for your review and for your files. As Jay indicated, we are willing and very interested in working with the Conservation Commission. On the back of the property where the resource protection zone is and a little bit further up, we have talked with the National Guard, and they are interested in preserving that with a conservation easement that would enhance the buffers around the Saco, excuse me, the Scarborough Marsh estuary system. You can see the, in red, outline here is the parcel at the tail end of this property here, is where we would be looking at the conservation easement. Everything highlighted in yellow here is either owned by the Town of Scarborough or the State of Maine, and it's held in conservation. One of the weak areas happens to be right at this point. It's one of the thinnest areas that there is protecting that stream that heads down to the marsh, so we believe that putting this in preservation and keeping it from being developed forever would help preserve the marsh and its natural condition that it's in now. What we're talking about essentially is this type of a building. The National Guard, in their funding, goes through a very prescribed and rigorous funding request process, where they have to fill out forms and say, "For the field maintenance shop, we need to have four bays and six offices in this storage area and that storage area." Most of the FMSs are very similar in their design, and this is a rendering of one that has three vehicle bays here. This one would have a fourth one added to it. In the middle, there would be the support areas and then main entrance, and at this end would be the offices and meeting spaces for the folks working in that building. There would be 19 people assigned to that building. They typically would work a Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 3:30, 7:00 to 4:00 o'clock, so it's very much like a public works facility from that perspective, where they come in, at the end of the day, they lock up and they go home to the next day. In the front would be the personal vehicles. We've, we had submitted a design for the layout of the site when we did the joint meeting with the Planning Board and the Town Council. That was essentially a massing diagram that we had put together to look at the National Guard's program. We knew that they needed a field maintenance shop of a certain size and a readiness center of a certain size, and that they needed so much area outside for equipment storage and for vehicle parking, and we put that on the site to represent it en masse. Now, when we did that, we kind of dropped it on there and didn't really pay attention to the municipal lines. And so, when we came before the joint meeting, one of the first concerns that everybody raised is how are we ever going to permit a building when it's in two different municipalities and making sure that you go through building site plan review and building permits gets very complicated? So, one of the first things we did was we reoriented the locations of some of the elements on the site. So, we did hear a lot of the comments that you guys had given us, and we've wrapped those into the design. We also heard the, Mr. Fairweather, the abutter, his comments and concerns at that meeting about the massing of the building and the visibility of the building and some of his concerns about noise and lights, and those were echoed by the Town Council and the Planning Board. So, we've incorporated a lot of the mitigation opportunities into the design, and we're going to share those with you now. Now, this is the site plan that was in your packet. This is blown up a little bit, so you can see it a little bit better, and again, to orient you to the far left going north-south is Route 1. Eastview Drive is here. Curves is down here in the lower-left corner. So, you would come down Eastview Drive, and you would drive into the readiness center, which is located here, and then if you continued back up through, you would cross the municipal line, and the FMS is now all in Scarborough. The readiness center is all in Saco. So, there is actually a break in the pavement that we can separate those two projects so that we don't have any concerns as far as trying to permit it in two municipalities. We've oriented the FMS in this manner, and so at the top, facing the vehicle parking here for the staff, would be the offices, and then the maintenance bays would be on the lower half of the building. And we did that for several reasons. The primary one is to use the building as a screen for the equipment located in the back. So, there's drive-through bays, very much like a public works facility, so the equipment being worked on can be parked in the back. They would open the doors, drive it into the facility. This is a conditioned building, so the bays are heated and/or cooled, so the majority of the time, those doors are going to be closed, which helps to mitigate some of the noise of the activities inside the building. We put the administrative end on the north side. Again, it's one of the quieter features for that program, so that again, as you get towards the abutter's house here, and then the abutting vacant property up here, the quieter activities would be on this corner adjacent to the abutters. Coming down to the back here, this is the area in the back that is a secured area, so that is the area that would have security fencing. The front side has a gate coming into the site, and then you can get up to the vehicles for the visitors and/or staff working in the building, has access here. That's outside of the secured area, so any of the barbed wire on top of the fence is going to be screened behind the building so that it's not easily viewed from the abutting So, the original plan that we had had general massing on it, and we heard, and we went back, and we drafted an earlier version of this, and then I set up a meeting with the abutter, Mr. Fairweather, and his wife, and I went to review that with them so that we could see with the revised plan what their concerns were, and if we had been able to mitigate any of those at all. So, we met and they discussed, and I'm not going to put words in his mouth, but Mr. Fairweather's mouth, but we talked about the visibility and the noise and the lighting again. So, we went back after hearing his concerns. We went back and actually pushed the building farther back to the right in this drawing, another 100 feet away from Mr. Fairweather's house. As it stands in this drawing here, there's just over 500 feet distance between the two buildings. There is a vegetative screen here with an undeveloped parcel of about 235 feet between the two spaces. So, we were able to adjust it a little bit by getting into, we were trying to avoid cutting trees down on the site, trying to leave as much of the existing vegetation as possible. You can see that a little bit better here. I superimposed the site plan on top of a Google Earth aerial, so you can see Mr. Fairweather's house here. You can see the vegetative screen. The building is here. In this gray area is the parking lot, and you can see we've pushed it back so that we're actually encroaching into the existing vegetation a little bit. We've tried to maintain this green space, but by pushing it back another 100 feet, we can just eliminate just a few of the trees here, and it would work a little bit better as far as giving separation from the abutter's property. We've also looked to augment this existing buffer between this vacant lot, should it be developed someday. We were looking to infill this with any of the holes in it with some additional vegetation to enhance that screen. Understanding that visibility and sightlines were a significant concern for the abutter and for the Town Council, as well as the Planning Board, we've been working behind the scenes, so to speak, to see what we can do to enhance that. And the problem we have is the University of New England is going through the permitting on the front end to make sure that the zoning is consistent with the National Guard's needs. The National Guard's money is available to construct in 2018. One of the suggestions that the planning staff had given us is, can you build a buffer sooner to give it a lot, to give it a chance and allow it to grow before you get ready to do the facility's maintenance shop? Well, the National Guard can invest money in the second portion of the work because the money is very specific. It's allocated to the first portion of the work. So, we, we're having a little bit of a difficulty with that, but over the last week, we were able to structure a deal with the National Guard and the developer on the Saco side to work on creating a berm in a buffer with, before the first phase of the readiness center actually starts. So, what we would look to do is, when the contractor or the developer extends the roads as part of the purchase and sale agreement, he's going to extend Eastview Drive down to the site and then connect it to the Don Marie Drive. While they're mobilized and onsite, which is going to be in the summer of 2015, they will take some of that material, and they're going to build a buffer or a berm along the property line. Let me blow that up. I normally don't like to walk in with new drawings, and Jay hasn't seen this, and quite frankly, the National Guard hasn't seen the final version of this yet, but I thought it was important enough to bring this forward tonight. I broke one of my own rules. Normally, I don't do that, but I wanted to make sure that you understood that this was a concern that we understood to be significant. So, zooming in a little bit, again, the Fairweather property, the house is here. This is where we had a planted vegetation. This is now a six-foot-tall berm that's got a plateau on it that's 20 feet wide, so instead of planting the trees at grade, we would plant the trees on top of the berm to give additional height to that screening. Now, we've put this into a profile so that you can see it a little bit better here. That's just zoomed in again on the site. The slope, you can see the contour lines, so the slope is going away from the abutter's property at a fairly decent pace. This represents the existing grades. This, and this is a little bit out of scale from a horizontal perspective, but it serves the purpose. This would be the facilities, the FMS building here, approximately 35 feet tall. This would be the berm, six feet tall, with the trees planted at about seven feet on top of it. Going upgrade, this would be a six-foot-tall person standing in the backyard of the Fairweather's property. So, from a perspective, you can see that with the berm and a five-foot tree, or a seven-foot tree, excuse me, the sightline would come down to about here on the 35 tree, excuse me, the sightline would come down to about here on the 35-foot building. If we give this four years to five years of growth, you're going to gain another four or five feet of elevation on those trees, which when you stand there and you follow the tree line, you are now looking at the very top of the building. So by having this vegetative screen on top of the berm installed before the first phase of development goes on, gives the screening time to grow in and be in effect when the construction actually happens of the FMS down the road, be it 2020 or beyond. For every year that goes by before that development happens, the more the screen is going to develop and actually be effective. It could also serve to screen the construction activities of the FMS so that normally the landscaping goes in towards the end of a construction project. This would be put in ahead of time, would be well out of the way of the construction and then they would be able to let it grow and thicken up prior to the development of that site. So I felt it was important enough to bring this forward and I apologize for not submitting it with the package, but I think it was important for you to understand that this is something that is recently developed that was worthy of hearing tonight. Back on the, on the site plan, this is a photometrics plan of the total site. So you have the readiness center here at the south. And on the north side, you would have the FMS building. You've got the personal vehicle parking here and here for the readiness center with the vehicle equipment, outdoor storage areas behind the building. Property line along the top here. This was done using one of the standard light fixtures that the National Guard utilizes. It is an LED fixture that is with zero uplighting. This plan illustrates that you can illuminate that site at the appropriate levels without spillover onto the abutter's property. Now, there is, there was a comment in the planner's comment that we use 25-foot poles and that is correct in this drawing. You could easily swap those out for 20-foot poles and have the same effect with the personal vehicles on the front. On the backside, if we put in 20-foot poles, we would wind up putting in additional poles in a large area where they're trying to manipulate, maneuver large pieces of equipment. The 25-foot poles would be behind and below the 35-foot building from the abutter's property. So we would rec, we would like to see if we could maintain the 25-foot poles in the back, which would be behind the building and that would allow us to minimize the number of poles when they're trying to maneuver the equipment in and out of the maintenance We added a couple of pages of some fairly generic stormwater details based on low-intensity design. The National Guard with their stormwater programs utilizes that so that they can minimize the impact in the infrastructure. So they are willing to commit to that. And again, on the plan, it was very conceptual in that we know that the FMS footprint is going to be very similar. We know that the square footage of asphalt is going to be very similar. So we were able to do some basic calculations on the amount of stormwater that's going to have to be managed. We went through that basic calculations and plotted out some storm detention ponds and some filtration areas that could handle that on the site. And we're confident that when they go through the final site plan review with you folks, that they'll be adequately addressed from a stormwater standpoint. The National Guard not only has the planning board to consider, they have several other regulatory agencies over and above that they would have to consider. They have some federal guidelines on their construction. So they, number one, there's a federal law that says they have to meet all state, federal and local construction in-site plan review criteria. They also have to meet certain energy issues. They have historic preservation. They have Endangered Species Act issues that they have to contend with. So they have a fairly extensive environmental review that goes along with all of their programs. So we're pretty confident from a, from a site development standpoint that they can accommodate anything that would be required in the town of Scarborough and/or through the state of Maine from a environmental standpoint. They know where the wetlands are, they know where the buffers are, they know where the resource protection zones are, and we can easily accommodate that on this site. This was a quick review of the zoning and I put this up. The existing zoning is here. There is very little change between the contract zone that's being recommended in the existing RF zone. There is no front or side, there is no front setbacks or street frontage here, so that's non-applicable. And the only other dimensional change is they're looking for a 45 instead of a 35-foot building height, which is consistent with what happens to be in Saco as well as in the Town Village District, the TVC-3, which abuts that on the Route 1 side. So it's basically aligning those dimensions with the adjacent parcels. The utilities to the site would be from Route 1 on the Saco side, down Eastview Drive and into the site. We have requested capacity to serve letters from the water company and from wastewater treatment facility. We have received and have submitted the wastewater treatment capacity to serve. They do not have a problem meeting the needs of the National Guard. The developer on the Saco side has gone through a full permitting process for the entire development. So he's gone through the DEP's regulations, he's gone through the city of Saco's in order to get the contract zoning. And they have submitted all of the utility capacity to serve letters to the satisfactory of the Saco Planning Board. This development on the Saco side for this parcel is probably four or five lots within that bigger development. That represents about 46,000 square feet of retail eating establishments, business parks. The capacity to serve the development as proposed as part of the Saco development is significantly more than what the National Guard's needs are. So we don't believe that the water capacity is going to be an issue. We've just had trouble getting the review letter from them. We expect to get that at any time and when we do, we will submit that as well. So from that perspective, we don't believe there's an issue as well. From a traffic standpoint, again, there is a traffic moving permit, movement permit that's associated with the development in Saco. So those four sites, four to five sites, represent the 46,500 square feet of retail and/or office space. So from a traffic perspective, we've talked with our engineers and the National Guard and the FMS has 19 employees, so they would probably have about 20 peak hour trips in the morning and in the evening. From the readiness center, there's only a handful of people that work there Monday through Friday. So the total trips in a peak hour AM and PM is approximately 29. If we take a look at the traffic moving permit and we extrapolate out those four to five lots that were included in that, that 46,000 square feet, and we use a really conservative estimate, which is essentially a business-type office as opposed to say a fast-food retail establishment. A business office is about 1.5 trips per thousand square feet. A retail fast-food would be about 40 trips per thousand square feet at peak hour. So we're using the 1.5 and if you do the math on 1.5 per thousand on 46,000, you come up with about 69 trips during peak hour. We're looking at 29 trips. So we don't see this as being an issue from the traffic moving permit that was issued. The amount of traffic, even from a conservative standpoint, is going to be significantly less than it would be if it was developed as a business property. So from that perspective, we don't believe that a full-blown traffic study is required from the site plan review criteria in Scarborough because that's usually kicked in at about 35. And between the FMS and the readiness center, which is actually in Saco, we're only going to experience 29 trips. So when this is brought forward in the final site plan review, even though this is conceptual in nature now, that traffic moving permit in the resolution will be, have, will have been taken care of because they're going to have to go through the Saco Planning Board and adjust that traffic moving permit to accommodate the weekend activities that will exceed the 35 trips. There's one weekend a month where the National Guard comes to this readiness center on the Saco side. They come once a month and they'll be bringing 100 to 105 people, all arriving at approximately same time. That's on the weekend. So when the Saco site plan goes forward, they will address that. That's not on the Scarborough piece, but it will be addressed through the Saco piece. And being on peaks on the weekend as opposed to the weekday, it doesn't look like that's going to be an issue with a modification to the traffic movement permit that already exists for the Saco development. One of the other concerns that was raised at the joint meeting was the concern about spills and oil and in materials on the site being close to natural resources. The National Guard is, been established for a long time. They have many, many facilities across the state. Being a state agency and with some federal oversight, they're required to review all of their policies and procedures and they have in place spill containment, spill prevention, containment and countermeasure procedures for all of their facilities. Those procedures basically address the training and the education of all the people working on that area so that they're familiar with the facilities that they have and should there be an accident or an axle dental spill or discharge of a chemical, how you respond to that from an immediate standpoint and what you have to do as far as reporting it. They follow all those protocols and they actually will generate a document for this site based on the specifics of that site, the materials that they have, the conditions that they have, and that will be brought forward to all the people that work there. So from a safety standpoint, it's a, generally a well-run facility. Now, I can say that because we are interested in the property that they own in Portland. And we have gone through a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 environmental assessment of that site. It's an older site. It's been there since the early 1900s and a lot of it was used well before a lot of these measures were actually put in place. We went and did the assessment there and there are no red flags waved on that site. So they've done a really good job of maintaining the site from prevention and countermeasures. And if there was a spill and a few did occur on that site, they did an immediate cleanup and they reported it to the DEP following all the procedures and protocols that were required of them. So when we went through and did our study, the biggest concern I have is there's asbestos floor tile in the building. All of the stuff in the yard is not an issue. So knowing that they have these policies and procedures in place and that these facilities will be designed to meet the current standards, not the standards that didn't exist back in the early 1900s and the 1940s, I'm very confident that they can put in place procedures and protocols and equipment and facility design that will minimize and/or negate any of those kind of activities on the site. So I'm pretty confident about that. Again, this is a typical readiness center. One of the concerns that was raised is having a readiness center next to a residential property. This is one of the readiness centers in Skowhegan and you can see it here. The brighter white is actually the building. There is a equipment storage area in the back and you can see this is in a fairly dense residential neighborhood. It's been in existence for a while and it's a fairly compatible use in that area. And it's also adjacent to some fairly sensitive natural areas. There's a stream running through and another water body here. This is the readiness center in Skowhegan. This is another readiness center in Norway and again, you can see the residential community around it. This is the readiness center in Portland. This is the Stevens Avenue Readiness Center. This is their property here. This is the University of New England. Our property goes around, wraps around the tail end of their property and continues back here. So it's very difficult, it's over a quarter of a mile to get from point A to point B, thus our interest to go this way. This site here is the FMS on the backside. The readiness center is essentially in, on the forefront. This building here is a dormitory, 144-bed dormitory, literally five feet from the property line. So there's a buffer here and I've been affiliated with that campus since 1989 and I've been responsible for the security and the facilities operation of that site. And not once have I gotten a call from any of our faculty, staff or students living on the campus that there was too much noise or activity at the armory. They, vehicle maintenance facility, they're there 7:00 to 3:30. They go home at the end of the day. They put everything away and they go home. It's a relatively quiet site. Occasionally they'll have, and this is during the day, you can see our parking lots are pretty full here. This is their personal vehicles for the readiness center. They've got a few cars here. There's not a lot of activity there that goes on. They have activity one weekend a month where they'll bring 100 people in. They'll generally come to the site, they'll do some training, some classroom exercises and then oftentimes they'll jump in their vehicles and they'll go out on the road to put what they're learning into use, into practice in the field. So while they come there, they train there, then they depart, then they come back the next month for additional training on the readiness center side. The FMS, which would be located in Scarborough, is the Monday through Friday, turn off the lights at the end of the day and go home. So we hope that we have given you enough information tonight for you to be able to see that we can design a building, facility, a site development that is, one, consistent with your site plan regulations and allow this to go forward to the town council so that they can continue to consider the contract zoning. With that, I would conclude my presentation and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have about it.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point, it's about 9:10. I'm going to suggest that before we start a public hearing, we take about an eight-minute break and come back at 9:15. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone back to the Town of Scarborough Planning Board meeting. Our next point in this process would be to conduct a public hearing. And to that end, what I'd like to do again, before I open up the public hearing, just a few instructions, if I might. If you want to speak on this issue, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. We do ask that you try to keep your comments to five minutes or less, and usually at a public hearing, we also ask that if you would, please understand that we hear you when one person talks, and we appreciate the fact that if one person makes a comment, it's being spoken as if many people would have made the comment. Because if you get, if you actually take the time to stand up and talk to us, we recognize that your opinion represents that of many. So if you do get up and comment, we ask that you try not to repeat what somebody else said the first time, and understand that the board has in fact heard you. So having said that, I would like to open up this to public comment, uh, excuse me, a public hearing. If anybody would like to make a comment, please approach the podium.
Good evening. My name's John Fairweather, seven fifty-two, U.S., Route One. Alan, I appreciate the work that you've done trying to accommodate us. But our number-one concern at that meeting with you and with the council, and still is to this day, is our property value. And with all due respect, I don't like the berm very much. I don't like that at all. So what we also talked about at the house, in case somehow that this thing does go through, which I hope doesn't, is that we talked about full-size trees with small ones intermingled in the middle of it. So we did talk about that. But number one was our property value. So I'm really not sure what to say. I just don't know what to say. But if you folks were in our shoes, and you knew that the impacts of this zone change would affect your quality of life and almost certainly lower your property value, what would you do? How would you feel? What actions would you take, and would those actions be enough? You know, I'm not sure any one of you would want to be in our position right now and have to answer those tough questions. But you are in the position to say, no, this does not make sense for this piece of property, and leave it as it is for the right application for the land presently zoned. How long is this process for all to realize that such a zone change has no economic value to our town? And I have yet to see or hear why there should be an exception to the rule. This has bugged me since that meeting. But during the meeting that Alan had his presentation, he mentioned that the Welcome to Scarborough sign is well past the site before you even perceive that you're in Scarborough. The sign gives you the perception that you're in Saco. So not only am I here to tell you that I don't want this zone changed, I'm also here to tell you that although that sign leads people to believe that we are not part of the Scarborough community, it's about four hundred and fifty feet from the truth. We are part of the Scarborough community. Our daughter goes to school here. We shop here. We support local restaurants here. Our church is here. I coach community service soccer here. Above all, we pay taxes here. So I'm asking you, my neighbors, don't allow this zone change. It may not affect you, but just know, it hurts us. When Alan and I and my wife sat down at that meeting, I just, I can't, I want to make sure that everyone knows this, he was nothing but a gentleman, nothing but a gentleman. And we were happy to have him in our home. And certainly we welcome back on better circumstances, but I did tell him that unfortunately, Alan, as much as I like you, you're our bad guy. And he said, John, I understand, and we're going to push this process through. And I said, good, I hope you do, and I'll wave to you on the side of the street when I see you again, but I'm going to fight this thing till the first bucket goes in the ground. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fairweather. Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing. Turn it over to the board. Mr. Major.
Yeah. I'm trying to sit here and put my thoughts together in how I want to present this. First of all, I was at the joint meeting, and of course, I read the presentation then, and I've heard it again tonight, and I've heard Mr. Fairweather's comments then and again tonight. What concerns me is I can't even remember what I had for breakfast this morning, no less trying to come up with some recommendations and suggestions of a project that isn't going to be done for another four or five years. And I know what Jay is asking us to do as far as making some suggestions or recommendations to the council. And I have a lot of questions. I mean, I've got a whole list of questions here. But the fact that this project is way off, so I guess my question to Jay is, is one of our tasks tonight to decide whether or not this is an acceptable project, no less some of the details that would go into it, like all the things like buffering and setbacks and stormwater and so forth and so on and so on.
What I'd offer in that terms is ultimately it's the council's call if this, you know, if the proposed activity meets the standards to be an acceptable contract zone. The planning board had your opportunity at the joint meeting to sort of voice your concerns about the contract zoning in concept. At this point, what the board is being asked to tonight is to accept for the foreseeable future that this is moving forward towards a contract zone approval. So what this board's job is to, foregoing current zoning, is to review the project to see how it complies with, or ensure it complies with the site plan review ordinance So that's, that's the board's charge this evening. And to that end, you know, that's where our staff comments, like you just said, it, you know, when we look at this, and certainly if the planning board wants to get into the detailed merits of a stormwater report at this time, that's at this board's discretion. It's, you know, staff sort of tries to take the approach of what is reasonable. If they're not going to build the, if we know they're not going to build the readiness center for four years, they don't even have funding for the vehicle maintenance shop that they're looking to put in the town of Scarborough. We're at least four years away from putting anything in the earth, and it's probably many more years after that. So does it really make sense to do a detailed analysis of those type of elements that are likely to change? That certainly if the board feels that that's important, then that's at this board's discretion. But it seems, at least when staff was looking at that, you know, those are the type of details that could be looked at in the future, four, five, six, eight years down the road when it comes forward. But right now, what seemed to be the sort of, the driving elements that we thought the board should focus in on are, again, the items that I talked about before, really sort of the buffering, screening of a butter's, defining the parameters of future development, where can, you know, sort of active development occur, i.e. paving and, you know, hard contract work happen, and where can those more passive activities, landscaping, berming, you know, the sort of softer approach tech development occur on-site? What's a reasonable impact on the natural resources in the area? And that's, I think, where the Conservation Commission bit weighs in, but certainly any thoughts the planning board has in those terms. So I think really the board setting the parameters around which a future, around which future site details will come forward in is where we're at right now, and sort of making those recommendations to the council as to which items make sense to dial in now as part of the contract zone, such as landscaping and timing of the landscaping, or setbacks, or reduced setbacks, or whatever, whatever those elements are that the board sees, and making those recommendations to assure that those details are in the contract zone upfront. And then, so that's, that's the direction, that's the best direction we could come up with. We, you know, certainly at the pleasure of the board.
I appreciate that. And I'm in, it's a dilemma for me, and that's very odd for me, unusual. Because emotionally, I hear what Mr. Fairweather has said and have a lot of empathy for that. But on sitting in this chair with what I'm supposed to do as a member of the planning board, I don't hear anything that's contrary to what you just said as far as buffering is concerned and the berming and landscaping. So that creates a dilemma for me. But you're also saying that in the final analysis, the council's the one that's going to approve or not approve the contract zone. So if that be the case, then I don't hear anything, whether I'm far or totally against the project, that I would say no to what has been presented, and presented very well, by the way, by the applicant, as far as what you just outlined without repeating it. So that's where I stand, and I'll pass them there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Dupont.
Pass for a minute.
Mr. Fellows?
All right, thank you. I was also at the joint workshops a few weeks ago, and I did take the opportunity at that time to ask some questions and express some concerns that I had about the merits of this as a contract zone. I still have some of those concerns, given the location here and some of the resources involved. I also have empathy for the, for Mr. Fairweather. And I think that when one owns property that is in a real farm zone, there is a reasonable expectation that there are certain types of uses that will, that may or may not become your neighbor. So without, but, and without belaboring that too much, I'll just say that I, I still have some real reservations about the merits of this as a contract zone and this particular use. That said, I did appreciate the presentation and having some additional context and some things explained. If this is to move forward, as has been stated and suggested by staff, buffering will be a huge, a huge priority and a huge concern. I do appreciate the, the evident goodwill of the applicant in, in putting the, sort of a preemptive or pre-construction berm along the property line with Mr. Fairweather. I, I hear that he's not wowed about that, and I know that was just kind of put out there tonight, but I, I think that indicates that the applicant is, is listening and, and operating in good faith, which is definitely appreciated. So again, buffering will be a, will be a huge concern, and we're going to want to, if we go forward, I think it's fair to say we'll want to see some, you know, something more than just a, a small screen. And it sounds like things are kind of moving in that direction. In terms of design standards and reviewing architecture, and again, this is a conceptual conversation at this point, but I for one would, would really want this board to have the ability to have some meaningful review of the architecture. And I do understand that, you know, we're, what, I understand the nature of the beast here, if you will, that there, there's not a wide range of design styles that are typically used in this type of facility. That said, I would hope, again, given the nature of this site and location and the neighbor, that there'll be some opportunity for, for this board to have some meaningful review and for there to be some openness to some modifications as appropriate. And I know probably the closest thing that we regularly experience along these lines is when we have an applicant who's representing a national franchise, and they come in and they say, well, this is, we've got Design A, Design B, and Design C, and if, you know, we really went, went beyond the call and we came up with a couple of modifications here. And that always, I think, makes us feel a little bit frustrated and hamstrung. So I would hope that there will be some opportunity to have some- So I would hope that there will be some opportunity to have some discussions there if this does go forward. One question I do have for the applicant is, and I didn't, I wasn't able to glean this from, from the presentation, it's possible I missed it, but in terms of phasing, I understand that there are funding questions and some timing issues there, but would there be a scenario in which the readiness center would be developed on the Saco side before there is funding and/or permitting for the, the maintenance facility? And that's, that's sort of a, a question for the applicant.
As I understand it, the intent of the National Guard is to find a piece of property that they can build both of these facilities on. So that said, if they walk away from this process with a contract zone that allows the FMS to be built in Scarborough, they would proceed forward with building the readiness center in Saco while they're anticipating future funding to be made available at some point for the FMS. So it's potential that they could go forward with readiness center and still waiting for funds for the FMS at a later date, yes? Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So I really don't have a whole lot more to add at this point. I will look forward to hearing what the Conservation Commission has to say after they have a chance to weigh in. I think one of the, and you alluded to it during your presentation, one of the balancing challenges will be providing enough distance and buffering from Mr. Fairweather's property without adversely affecting the, the resources more to the rear of the property by moving things over too far to where you're starting to have to really knock down a lot of trees and, and sort of threaten those areas. So there's a lot going on here, and I do appreciate the presentation, and we'll look forward to seeing how this evolves.
Thank you. Mr. McGee.
Yeah, I think I just have to echo probably some of, some of Ron's thoughts on this, which is, it's, it's an interesting exercise, and this has been a night of interesting exercises, which is, we don't really legitimately have anything officially to discuss here. I mean, unless the council moves on something, and I know you're asking us conceptually to, to picture this being moved forward, but we're being asked to consider a bunch of different varying factors on something that we don't know if will happen. So with that in mind, um...
If I could stop you, let me, let me stop you before you go any further, all right? Because literally, we are giving an opinion of this board to the council before they create a contract zone with the intent that, and hope that, items that we bring forth, they build into the language of the contract zone before it gets acted upon. So I don't want you to think that there's really not a task at hand for us, there is a big one.
The contract zone's not a foregone conclusion at this point.
Well, that's right, but if, and if I might just jump in, you're not, you are tasked with giving a preliminary approval.
Of what we're seeing here with the buffering and...
What the contracts, what the zoning language says is the board is tasked at this step, step four of 10, with providing preliminary approval of the application that it meets the site plan review ordinance requirements. That's where staff was suggesting we recognize that you can't, we're not doing a detailed stormwater analysis. A lot of these detail items that we typically get into are going to change. You know, lighting may change in four, five, six years, there might be different light fixtures, but that's where I think we, the board can create a preliminary approval that sets the parameters for what future, and if the board doesn't want to go down that path, that's fine. This is your decision, this is your, your, your process. If you want to go down the path of doing a detailed analysis of stormwater, that's, you know, but it just doesn't seem, when staff looked at that, it seemed to have little merit, understanding that projects, over the course of years, if, you know, if it's more than six months before some of planning board approval to when the contractor comes back for a building permit, things have changed. And so we think that, you know, again, yeah, I've said it, that, you know, you can sort of set what are going to be the critical conditions, if you will, to mitigate the adverse impacts. And if the board's, you know, not satisfied with that, then we can sort of backtrack and redress and take a second look at this, but...
So, yeah, going back to, thank you, by the way, going back, I guess, to what Ron's comments are, which is, I have a great deal of empathy for Mr. Fairweather and your situation. And sitting here as a planning board member, we have to consider what we have in front of us. And at this time, I think I have to say, I appreciate the fact that the Army National Guard and the UNE have worked with Mr. Fairweather here to establish the buffering, which the berm well, maybe not the best option, probably could be dealt with in a different way that could be somewhat satisfying to the needs of the homeowner that abuts the property. The design of the building, you know, if I were to look at this, it, you know, I think what Corey said, that you wish you had a little flexibility, but understanding that we don't have the utmost flexibility in, in some of the designs that maybe the Army National Guard presents, it's, it's not the ugliest thing I've ever seen. So I'll say that much. The, it's a difficult situation. I don't, I, you know, this isn't something that you, that you expect to deal with when you sit on this board. You know, I, maybe circle back to me, I don't, I'm kind of lost for words, which is kind of unique for me, so. With that, your turn, Susan.
Ms. Zogwos.
I also was at the, the previous meeting. I think I made my, my thoughts pretty well known, but I'm going to do it again. I really think contract zoning is spot zoning. I personally don't think that we should be in the business of doing contract zoning. The town did a comprehensive plan, requiring a lot of public input, and from that comprehensive plan, zoning was put in place for what we wanted to see in our town. And we wanted that land to be RF. And I have nothing but heartfelt feelings because nobody would buy a piece of property to live in a house if they thought that the National Guard was going to be behind them. As far as I'm concerned, that's it. There is no economic benefit that I can see to Scarborough for this happening. And one of my, I hope that this does get heard by the, by the council because supposedly when you have a contract zone, everybody wins, and I just don't see what we're getting. Having said all of that, I do understand what the charge is to me in this position. And there's not much I can say. I do believe that should this come to pass, by the time that it gets to the planning board, we'll be able to deal with it. We've done things like this before in terms of taking pieces of property that we have questions about and concerns about and made it work. And I think we're skilled enough and we're conscious enough to be able to do that. I'm very concerned about, about national resource, what am I trying to say, impacts. We go out of our way, I mean, were you here when we spent how much time talking about open space and wetlands and wetland impacts and all that jazz? If there's one thing we do in Scarborough is that we take care of our wetlands. And that includes anything that looks like a marsh. And this property is on the edge of a major feeder that goes down into the marsh, and has not been the healthiest feeder in the face of the, of the Scarborough landscape in times past. It worries me. I'm not concerned about the oil, I'm not concerned, I mean, I know, I know enough about how that gets done, that it's safe. I'm talking about wildlife impact, you know, simple little things like, I'm looking for that letter, where was it, that said, according to the information, there's no rare botanical features documented, but, you know, I mean, when the applicant made the presentation, it didn't finish saying, you, you may want to have that site inventory by a qualified field biologist to ensure that no undocumented rare features are inadvertently harmed. So even the experts don't really know what's there. I'm sure that nothing is going to happen unless we are absolutely positive that everything has been checked 18 ways to Sunday. So my charge, my feedback to the, to the council is, if they decide, and thank you, I don't have to make that decision, but if they decide they're going to have a contract zone here, my concern is wetland impacts, wildlife impacts, I know we're going to be getting the Conservation Committee involved, thank goodness, but anything that has to do with conservation, this is on the very edge of what we call Scarborough to be about. And we're going to put a National Guard training center there. This makes no sense to me, but I think that we can probably make it so that sooner or later, you know, we'll get it so that it's right. I'm very concerned about the timing of Part One and Part Two, because there really isn't much that we can do until, you know, it gets close enough so that we can actually start to get our hands into it. It's interesting to me that Saco is all, Saco is all sewn up, and we're just now getting a chance to look at this. I find that all very interesting, but again, I, national resources, buffering, obviously, anything that can be done and everything that anybody can come up with that needs to, that can be done to protect the private property, a house that's right there, is something that's enormously important. And as a member of the planning board, I will want, that probably is where I'm going to be looking most carefully. I, I trust that the roads in and out will be done properly, I don't have any concerns about oil and all of that stuff, I don't think it's going, you know, the, the fencing is what the fencing is, I don't have those kinds of concerns. I think that we can take care of whatever needs to be taken care of, but it's going to take a long time because there's a lot of unanswered things out there that have to do with our job. And one of them is national, I mean, um, um, natu-, natural, not national, natural resources and buffering and making sure that the person who has the building that is in keeping with the zoning is not kicked out onto the, having his property become not worth anything when he's living up to the zoning and this is something that has nothing to do with the zoning. So that's a whole mixed bag, but it's a very difficult place to be. I don't know what it is they really want us to say at the council level. I just think it's difficult, I think it's emotional, I think that we have the skills to make it work if that's what the council wants to do, but I sincerely hope that they don't do it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff. Hypothetically, just something that dawned on me. Let's assume this project doesn't go through, Jay. It's an RF zone, somebody else comes in and wants to do something with that property. Would it be, as it is now zoned, strictly residential?
It's RF.
RF. It's RF, so principally the allowed uses in the residential zone are, in the RF, are residential, commercial farming, I'd have to pull out my zoning book and I could go through the list of permitted uses, probably, so I don't shoot from the hip and forget any. Commercial agricultural, commercial animal husbandry, farm stands, agricultural product stores, agricultural processing facilities with a total not more than 2,000 square feet, bed and breakfast, single-family detached dwellings, two-family dwellings, a single multifamily dwelling with four or fewer dwelling units on a lot, residential recreational facility, nursing home and boarding care facility, accessory uses, family daycare homes, golf course, municipal building in uses, place of worship, day camp on a lot with great, with at least 10 acres, forestry, commercial stables, so those are the permitted uses, and then there's a list of special exception uses.
For Mr. Fairweather, okay, let's assume, just for the sake of argument, this doesn't go through. One of these may go through. Something will go in there, is my, my comment to you. And would you be more comfortable without, I know I'm putting you on the spot a little bit, with any of those other potential entities, if this didn't go through on that property? Because something will go on that property, it's not going to remain vacant.
I would need you to be at the mic, please.
We've read that same paper that Jay has just spoke of. So we've always known that, you know, we live in a, in an area that's subject to growth, that kind of growth. So yes, sir, we, we would welcome an agricultural place, we would welcome farmers or a farm stand, something of that nature, that would keep us part of the country setting look, you know, that we actually live in. So yes.
Mr. Dupont?
Very difficult here. I'm certainly not in favor of this project at all. And this board can do a lot of things as far as buffering and landscaping and everything else, but we can't mitigate the fact that it's going to have adverse effect on this person's property value, plain and simple. This board recently just passed a, just a simple little subdivision with three lots, and two of these members voted against it because they're concerned on runoff on just these two lots. What's the impact of this going to be? Is there anything, any benefit here for the town of Scarborough to change this zoning? There's not. There's no tax dollars. We're getting an impact fee for traffic based on what, 29 during whatever time, and then 100 on the weekend? What's that going to do to Dunston? It's a major impact on this community with no benefit for Scarborough. Enough said.
You would defer it as well, I just want to give everybody a chance.
Susan helped put some of my thoughts, you know, back in order in my brain, thank you. She, she really did a nice job of basically summing up really, really the problem with this, which is, we have, you know, the tools and the talent to work with whatever we get handed from the council, and, and that's, I think that's what I was trying to say before. Not that we didn't have an impact on this process until the council did something about it, what I'm saying is, we're really kind of, you know, if, if they send it our way, then we're going to do the best that we possibly can by Mr. Fairweather. If, if it doesn't come our way, then we'll deal with it at that point, you know, and, and we'll deal with whatever goes in their necks. They just, I think I'd like to reiterate that comment, which is, I, I wish, I wish, I wish they had better luck on this process. And whatever happens and ends up in front of this board, I suspect we are going to be, it's going to be under heavy scrutiny, no matter what it is. That's it.
So our task here is to give preliminary approval?
It's part of...
That's a possibility. If the board so desires to want to do a preliminary approval for the project and give that recommendation to the town council, then certainly that's one of the things that we can do. If we opt not to give that approval, or if we opt to get more information before we give that approval, that's certainly within our right.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Can I, can I clarify something real quick? Are you going to be asking us to take an up or down vote tonight?
I haven't even given my comments yet.
Give the man a chance.
Can we take another break?
Maybe afterwards, right? I may need one. You know, first of all, what I want to do and say, quite frankly, is that I want to thank the active military, the reservists, all of our veterans for their service to this country. And we understand that facilities like these are needed and required in order for you to be able to do your job to keep us safe, and I thank you for that. Having said that, I wanted to get that out of the way first. I'm a short timer on this board at this point. I'm a short timer on this board at this point. This may not come back in front of me, which might be a good thing for some people. But I definitely want to express some of my concerns and get some of my comments into what I feel hopefully becomes notes that goes to the town council prior to any of their approvals. And contract zones are different from anything else that we deal with as a board, and I think that in my nine years, I may have seen two others. And I say that they're different because one of the comments I've been hearing the board members say, and with much respect from Ms. Ogless, is that we can deal with whatever comes to us. Well, the fact of the matter is, unless I'm mistaken, in a contract zone, the town council can approve any building that they want to approve regardless of what any of the building design standards say. They can erect a building that they want to erect that's totally different than any other building in this town. So, we may not, as a board, get as much, um, flexibility as we think we may get in terms of the design of a building or the flow of a site. Now, I do think that they'll listen, but I'm just saying that literally, the decision is in the control of the town council. It's not in the control of the Planning Board, other than our recommendation to them, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that to be the case.
The Planning Board can, as I sort of stated before, part of the preliminary review process, and again, this is going back to other processes which are more linear than this one. The board has really frankly reviewed to the nth degree all the proposals, and so in the contract zones, it states that the projects shall be developed in accordance with a site plan approved on X date by the Planning Board. After the contract zone, they basically come back to the Planning Board for perfunctory blessing, if you will, final approval. This is very different. At least the process we have laid out right now is very different. Again, at the discretion of the board, if you want to try to get into more detailed merits, and you feel that that's necessary, um, for the host of the site plan criteria, we could go down that path.
Correct. So- So in continuing my comments, the interesting thing about this is, we know that this project, potentially, the first phase of this project is four to five years away, funding for the second phase of the project, which actually would sit in Scarborough that we would be discussing this evening, or is potentially longer. The reality of it is, there may not be any person sitting here tonight on this board that will be here when this review occurs. That potential exists. So, my thoughts would be, if this were to ever get to a point where the council starts putting things down on paper, I would like to see them make sure that any kind of buffering that gets done between what is now the Merryweather Project, um, and the potential of this site development, that the landscaping berm and trees be erected as quickly as possible. I would agree with Mr. Whit- Merryweather that the trees should be larger than five to seven feet, Fairweather, excuse me. I apologize. Um, that the trees should be larger than seven feet at this time, or five feet at this time, and that we should put as many infill trees as we can to try to protect the buffering on this site. I would ask that the design standards that are in effect at the time that the facility would come in front of this board for approval, be the design standards that are in effect of the, of the time of that showing up, not necessarily the design standards that we have today. I would ask that the applicant find ways to reduce lighting during the evening or after-hours time in their parking lots, by providing the correct circuitry now and not having to try to do something later. It's a lot easier to put two wires in a pipe than it is one. Um, or just as easy, I should say. Certainly, we need to hear from the Conservation Commission. I would like to see that the final site plan and architectural review does in fact occur by the Planning Board, and that we can do our best to try to protect any of butter, should this project go ahead. I would also like to see the wetland buffering be part of that recommendation. Um, you know, it's, it's interesting how sites get developed, and I see some developers in the audience, so I know that they're going to understand what I'm saying, but I don't think anybody ever says, "We're going to put this building here, and then five years from now, build the building." I don't think that happens. I think what happens is a piece of property becomes available, and people try to decide, "What the heck can I do with that? How can I make a buck at that?" Right? And that's, that's fine. I mean, right, that's, there's not any issues with that at all. So I think this project is in front of us at this particular location because a piece of property came available, and it might make sense to maybe build something there. Is this the right thing to build there? My personal opinion is no. Do I think that this facility could go somewhere in, in the town of Scarborough? Absolutely, absolutely yes. I'm not convinced, as I know some of my fellow board members feel the same way, that this is the right spot to have this facility in our town. But that's my personal opinion, which I really can't, other than state to you, have it become part of my decision-making process as to how I act on this board. I'll have to become a counselor to make that work. And I appreciate that we have counselors here this evening as well, so thank you. Ultimately, do I think that the property or the site plan that was presented to us this evening meet the intent of our ordinances? Yes, I do. I think that the applicant has looked at the proper buffering, the proper design. I think he's gone out of his way to try to make the best possible solution on this site, and he is in fact following our ordinances in the process of doing so. So if I have to sit there and raise my hand at some point and say, "Do I think it meets the intent of our ordinances?", I will raise my hand. But at this point in time, I do not feel that my fellow board members are quite ready to make that happen yet. And so what I would like to suggest is that this come back to us before we make our final, um, recommendation to the town council. I think the applicant needs to meet with the Conservation Commission. I think they need to review, take another look at the plans and the locale and pin down, um, some of the extent of the development areas that we've talked about tonight, some of the buffering, if there's a possibility to look at any additional, uh, potential, what the architecture really would look like, uh, some of the landscape. Can we get some visuals, potentially, of what really the true one affected of butter is going to have to look at? Because this is totally different from most projects that come in front of us. I mean, this is, this is obviously a very unique project. And, um, so I think it would be good to see that. And lastly, in terms of what I would like to say to the council in the event I don't get to say it in the future, is before you approve this contract zone, go stand on Mr. Fairweather's property and take a look. Look at the impact to him and his family. You know, he's got a nice home, beautiful backyard, you can clearly see what he's looking at now, and envision, if you will, what this site may look at, and ask yourself, if this was my home, what impact would it have on my property value? And then make your decision. That's all I have to say. Susan?
I'd just like to agree that I'm not sure exactly what it is we need to ask for, but we're, I don't think this board is ready, I know I'm not, to raise my hand. I mean, I just want to agree with you. I, I think that this is not the time to make any kind of a, absolutely or absolutely not.
Again, I think we need to hear what the Conservation Commission has to say. Clearly, that's one of the items. And in terms of any kind of visual that we could possibly see from a couple of different angles, I think would be helpful.
I would like to put in our recommendation of whatever goes back to them as a result of this evening's meeting, that your suggestion, I, I know you didn't mean it as a suggestion, but I would like to suggest to the council that they actually do, individually, not as a council, but individually, go out to that piece of property. And not only in terms of the butter, the, the present owner of, of the house, but also just that piece of property. And remember, it's, it's, it's zoned RF. And just stand there and look at it, and, and then pay attention to what we're being asked to do. I think that would take care of a lot of questions.
Okay, the only, and I agree with all that, but again, and that's why I asked, asked him the question, somebody will put something on that piece of property.
I do know that. Um, we, we were all part of the determining factor as to what it was going to be zoned, and I know it's RF.
I'll, I'll throw in there real quick that a forty-five foot tall balloon hanging out in the back wouldn't be a bad idea, because that is larger than anything you'll build in an RF zone.
There you go.
There you go.
Yeah. Fly a balloon and see exactly what the height would be of the facility, as we spoke about earlier.
And Mr. Chairman, this may be kind of a formality or kind of an administrative thing, but I'd like to ask that staff make sure that the council received the minutes of this discussion.
Even though we didn't finish our work?
Well, I think we did.
I'm sure there'll be some, some, some headlines from the discussion, but just to make sure that, that the body of the conversation is there. We can prepare that and present that?
Yep, sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
So, actually, I do want to, just a clarifying question here. So we did hear, you know, you gave some, Mr. Chairman, some direction as to what to come back with before the board tried to make your preliminary approval, or preliminary findings, I'll call it.
Do.
So the applicant will be coming back to you. Do you want to hear what the Conservation Commission has to say before you make your any recommendations? The one thing, um, that did come up, had to do with sort of flying the balloon to see what the forty-five foot, is that something the board is interested in going on a site visit and seeing? Is that something you would want represented in a photo rendering, uh, sort of backdroped with the proposed landscaping in Birmingham? What's the intent of the balloon? Uh, because I, I felt like there would seem to be general board agreement that that was a good idea, but-
I think we should go with either council and the planning board to go together.
I think it should be a site visit. I personally think it should be a site visit. As I said earlier this evening, pictures are great-
Yep.
-but they can be misleading.
Okay, so we can work on schedule like that.
And a site visit, physically see it, get an understanding of what the size is of this and the impact to the area, I think would speak volumes in terms of, is it right for this site or is it not?
And we would like to invite the council to come with us.
We'd love to invite the council to come with us.
There's nothing, we don't, I shouldn't say, I was going to say we don't do that very often. I haven't been around that long this time, but every time I take a site visit, I learn so much more about what's actually happening with this particular item, and I think this is a perfect example. We need to go out and be on the land.
In a recent conversation with Chairman Sullivan, I know that he is interested in trying to do more, um, to get the two boards together at times to become more effective. So I think that he would be receptive to this.
Okay. Staff will work with the applicant on timing of an, of a site visit?
Out of curiosity, would the applicant also be on-site as well?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Yeah, and typically, what we try to do is have the applicant pin or stake corners of buildings, corner, uh, extent of development, uh, maybe, maybe, uh, center line of a road, but that's more for doing a subdivision. Anyway, we'll have them stake out some of the critical elements so the board can have a sense of where things may be starting, and like I said, we can work through that.
Not trying to have this be something to slow everything down to a, to a snail's crawl here, but the other side of the coin is, is this is Maine, November is rapidly approaching, so the sooner we can get out there, the better.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. I also think that it would take care of the fact that there are, there are not a whole lot of things I can come up with right now in terms of suggestions, because I haven't been on the property. I don't really know how close it is to the ravine. I don't know how close it is to the potential deer yard. I don't know any of that. And so I think it would be an excellent idea to go and actually be on the land. Thank you.
I think it'd be a worthwhile adventure.
Soon.
Okay.
Yeah. We have our marching orders. At least I feel like I do.
Yep.
Okay. Questions from the applicant?
Uh, no questions. Do you want me to try to respond to some of the questions that you posed? Or save that for another time?
I would save it.
Okay.
Let's go to the site visit, and if you want to have, you know, we can talk about maybe potentially those at that time, or talk about the site, and then have those questions answered at our next meeting, if we can make everything happen that quickly.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
John, if I hear anything on timing, I'll just-
Yes, the revised submission. You got it.
Okay.
We have something that's-
You tell me.
All right.
All right. This is, this is-
I think that the conflict is our power to come in. Very nicely, and that's where the blanding, when we move everyone with us, the bling from the deer.
Send the mitts down?
Send the mitts down. There we go.
Exactly what you do. We know and should have some factors.
Yeah, exactly. All right, um, if I could-
Yeah, right, right.
We'll continue to move on here. Item number eight this evening, South Coast Community Church requests the, uh, review of the following. An amended subdivision plan of the South Coast Community Church, and an amended site plan of the South Coast, uh-
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, oh, excuse me, a subdivision plan, and a, and the second one is a site plan.
Right.
All right, my apologies. Mr. Chase?
That's quite okay, Mr. Chairman. So yes, uh, these are two companion applications. They, you know, we'll ostensibly speak to them, uh, as one element, but they are two. There is a site plan component and a subdivision component. I'll start with the site plan component, in that the church is currently located on fourteen plus or minus acres. I don't recall offhand. It's been a long night, I'm sorry. Um, and, and that site is subject to a special exception approval by the Board of Appeals and a site plan approval by the Planning Board. Where they're looking to modify the lot on those approved plans, they need to be amended. So for the Planning Board, it's frankly, a fairly straightforward site plan amendment, because none of the uses of the church are changing, just how big the lot around the church use. However, uh, when staff began, began reviewing this application, it sort of dawned on us that this also has a zoning Board of Appeals, uh, component to it as well, and because it's a special exception use in the RF. We just talked about what type of uses are allowed in the RF. A church is a special exception, needs to go back to, or receive a special exception approval from the Board of Appeals. So before this board can make, take any final action, the applicant will need to go before the zoning Board of Appeals to get their special exception approved. That, uh, they're, I believe they're on the application for the zoning board. In the next week or two, they'll be heard. Um, so tonight, really, this is, we're going to look at this as sort of a sketch plan concept, um, and, you know, with the potential for moving forward with a approval, or at least a dis- or at least a decision at a future date. But at this point, until we have the Board of Appeals' decision, this board can't act. With that, now I'll talk to you about the subdivision that's in the RF. South Coast Community Church received original subdivision approval back in 'oh seven, I believe it was, for a ten-lot residential conservation subdivision design subdivision. So, you could actually see on the plan before us, there's a large open space to the back half, identified as town open space. And there's town access through the Homeowners Association open space. The church, as I indicated before, maintained about fourteen plus or minus acres with the original approval. I believe at that time, the church leadership had ideas of expansion of church activities. The new leadership isn't seeing the same vision for their futures, happy with their existing setup, and now would like to subdivide some of the remaining land. So, ostensibly, this becomes a subdivision amendment. And how do the three new lots fit into the existing subdivision? All that being said, staff has reviewed the application through, again, the RF provisions and Section 7A, the Conservation Subdivision Design Review Guidelines. And ostensibly, the one question we really have in terms of, you know, sort of conceptual design layout has to do with the layout of Lot fourteen and how it complies with the conservation subdivision designs requirements in terms of lot layout, in terms of clustering, maintaining large contiguous open spaces where feasible. So, that's, you know, in terms of layout and conceptual planning, that's really the main thrust of our comments. We had some other comments, of course, which I'm sure will be touched on as we go forward. Just want to point out that we did receive an email from a Michael and Maura Collins of Seven Tamarack Lane with some, in which they expressed their thoughts on the application. And with that, Mr. Chair, I turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name's Peter Beagle. I'm with Land Design Solutions, and I'm here with the South Coast Community Church. With me are multiple members of the church leadership and the pastor Travis Bush. They can help me with any questions if needed. As Mr. Chase said, the original approval was two thousand six, two thousand seven. I actually was working for site design at that time and was the project manager on this project. Site design is involved, again, in this project, as is Northeast Civil Solutions, who was the surveyor of record back at that same time. So, we have the same team and we're trying to remember everything, everything that transpired at that time. The church did retain sixteen point four acres originally. There was approximately ten additional acres of open space. We had the fifty percent threshold because we were a required conservation subdivision zone. In coming back to you this time, the church originally thought they might potentially expand with more church function on this side. And, well, this is the original. Back in here and thought, they had no idea what it may be, but they thought if the sanctuary should expand, conference, youth center, there were a host of different things. This side was looked at slightly differently, maybe ball fields, something more passive. In all, there was a point of discussion with the Planning Board that whatever these uses were, they had to be complementary to a residential development. And you'll find that's one of the notes on the plan. The leadership in the church today does not feel that the geometry and the layout, they are not interested in expanding over on the side. They do not feel that it makes sense. They were approached by a buyer who said that they would be interested if the church was interested in selling this land. And there was, they have financial reasons that that would be of a big benefit to them. So, that's what has got us here today. The question that Jay brought up about the layout of our three lots, and these would be the three lots. We've taken the sixteen acres of the church land, which is the purple, the yellow, and the tan. That was the original church land. And we've broken that up into two lots on this side and this lot number fourteen over here. These two lots seem to make sense. They have bought the church property. There's an easement, a stormwater infiltration basin right here, which really forms the border of this open space over here. So, that is why we have the shape of this lot. Down here, we have a finger wetland that comes, and we actually have a culvert that crosses the road here. So, we have this little wetland. We have a twenty-five-foot, no disturbed buffer around that. Septic systems, which are private subsurface septic systems, are a bit of a challenge on this site. We have septic systems right in this area. But the main reason for this lot here was that this being an amendment and having sold these lots previously, we were trying to provide some buffering to this lot number four. And we thought if we put this lot here, then we've provided some buffering here and we have buffering on this side. So, I do understand Mr. Chase's comment. But we thought by doing this, we could strike a balance of respecting a buffer that had been there before and at the same time, creating a decent lot. So, we would appreciate any guidance or thought that you folks have on that. There's no, size-wise, the math and the calculations work, that it's not really a problem for us to extend the lot over if we're concerned about abutting this lot number four with our lot. We do have to configure our lot so that we can utilize the soils over in this area. That's our challenge, if you will. We were proposing the tan retained, which was originally the church retained land, that that would be added to the homeowner's open space, which is the dark green, that it would go to the homeowner's open space. And we are currently working with the church's attorney to go through the homeowner's documents and figure out just how that would work. The Homeowners Association is responsible for stormwater, the maintenance and inspection of the stormwater infiltration basin and the stormwater facilities that are not right along the road. So, that would, one of the benefits to the Homeowners Association would be three additional lot sharing in that cost. And I think that's really our, the comments that staff had, I did go through those. We don't really have a problem complying with those. And our next submission, we will include all those. I guess I would add that we did, from a stormwater perspective, we did talk with DP and we do have documentation that they are fine with our stormwater the way it is as long as we provide a five-year inspection for the stormwater infiltration basin, which we've already done. We have the report written. We haven't submitted it yet, but we will. And we'll make sure to sound. And Woodard and Kern both get a copy of that. We'll, we will provide whatever analysis Woodard and Kern would like to confirm that everything is built to size. And we actually, the initial design built in some additional capacity, thinking that the church was going to be doing something in the future. So, that capacity should be there. And I guess I'm, that's, I think that's the gist of it. If anybody has any questions or public comments.
Okay. We do have an opportunity for public comment on this item as it comes in front of us this evening. If anybody would like to make public comment, please approach the podium at this time.
My name's Jeff Figu, Seventeen Tamarack Lane. I, conceptually, have no issue with the church making new lots here. But one of the concerns that I and some of the other homeowners have is just the, and I can touch on this a bit, is modifications to the Homeowners Association declaration, which was, I happen to be a title attorney, draft in, artfully drafted, which only envisioned ten lots. So, any modification in addition of lots, we'll need to fold that into the association somehow. There'll need to be an amendment adding those lots and creating some restrictions for them to keep the integrity of the neighborhood, which presumably, and we would expect, is already, but we didn't see any indication of that in any of the documents on file at Planning Board, at the planning office that I reviewed today. So, that would be my primary concern. And certainly, I do know as a possibility attorney for the church, if that was a possibility. But, you know, in concept, where, I mean, you know, I have no issue with this and I'm not sure any of the other people here do either, as long as, you know, the association and these new lots would be subject to the same rules that we are, they could put in some square footage minimums that would be appropriate based on what our homes were subject to. And as I said, I assume that that's been, you know, envisioned by them, but we just want some assurance that that is actually happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Figu. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, I'll turn it over to the board. Would you like to go, Mr. Dupont?
I really get too much to say on this at this point. Jay's concerned as far as Lot fourteen. I don't really have a problem with that. I know it's contrary to necessarily some of the rules we're supposed to, but we can break the rules once in a while. Homeowners Association language, you addressed that. That's a concern we have. And you were asking, existing conditions? That we really didn't get anything?
Yep.
I'd like to see that next round.
Just to clarify one point. The provision for clustering the lots and having unfragmented open space is in the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
To deviate from those would require a variance. So, the Planning Board has great discretion with site plan review ordinance and with subdivision ordinance. This is a provision that's written into the zoning ordinance with which this board has, unless it's written in there that the board may vary from it, then that's one thing. In this instance, the provision that lots be clustered is a zoning requirement. And that's not one that this board has discretion with.
Okay. That being said, I guess a matter of us seeing whether Lot fourteen can move up against four and then maybe come around that wetland buffer. That make sense?
Yes. If that's the board's requirement, we can do that.
Again, we don't want wetlands on private property such. I'm saying you have to work around that piece. That's enough for me for now.
Okay. Joe, thank you. Mr. Mazur?
Pass the moment.
Ms. Ogles.
Just have a couple of questions. In the new version, okay, what is tan is going to become part of the Homeowners Association? It's going to be open space?
Yes. That would be, that would be married up to the stark green.
Right, right. Okay. Except for that piece that is obviously wetland, that one. Up above in what is, yeah, are there wetlands and there is a wet pond?
Yes. There's, the stormwater infiltration basin is up here.
Yeah.
There are some drainage channel up in here. And this is all encompassed by an easement for the town, currently for the town and for the Homeowners Association to maintain the stormwater infrastructure in here.
We're not going to be doing much on this tonight except just asking questions. And I don't quite know how that particular piece of property, since it's got all the, it's been owned by the church until now.
Right now, it is owned by the church and the stormwater infrastructure is maintained by the association.
By the association within land that is actually owned by the church.
Correct.
So, it'll go to be owned by the people who are actually managing it.
That would be correct.
That would be correct. Okay. Down, in this one over here, the lower purple, okay, what is that hatched area down there?
That hatched was wetland that was, it was a man-created wetland by overexcavation. There was a lot of sand gravel.
So, you filled it.
And so, at that time, we got a DEP NERPA permit and that was all filled and reclaimed.
So, it took care of all the wetland except for that one finger that comes down?
Yes, yes. Which on here is right there.
Yep, I see it. Okay. That's all I'm going to ask for this evening. It's going to go to the ZBA, correct?
Correct.
And then it'll come back here?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McGee?
It's been covered. I'm all set.
Mr. Mazur, I'll hit you again.
Okay. Couple of things, well, thank you, by the way. The comments by the gentleman as far as fulfilling Homeowner Association rules and regulations, I hope that would all, would come to pass.
Yes, that will.
Okay. Also, in noting some of the staff notes which I was going over, it said way back when that there was plans for trail and pull-off. And that's never been done according to what the information we've been given.
My comment was simply that it, their note still says proposed where it should read existing.
Oh, it says.
Because it was established. The town does have an easement. We do have, there was, the gravel area was developed. The town does have the rights to maintain that trail. So, it, that was, it was really more of a mislabeling than a concern.
Right. I took the plan and I put on our new labels and I did not edit the old labels. So, that was proposed in two thousand seven. It was built and I neglected to edit that label.
My last comment and question is that from the letter that we received from one of the abotters, there was mention of tree lines and taking down tree lines. What's the intent as far as taking trees down?
Well, the church has a buyer to buy those three lots. And we don't have any, the only restrictions are in the Homeowners Association or the covenants do speak of trying not to clear cut. They do give the lot owner the ability to clear for their house, clear for their yard, swimming pool, many things. But they do advocate to try to limit the clearing. We, on these plans, we have just proposed to sell the lots and we have left the clearing, whatever clearing to the lot buyer and working within the covenants that have been set up. And we would be, or my understanding is, we'll be using those same covenants that were submitted and approved and recorded. The only thing that will be different is we'll be adding the three lots into that. I do have those covenants here and I actually, I could flip to that section if that would be helpful, where it talks about tree clearance. That'd be helpful.
No, I think you've answered it. And then my final is, what about the comment that, when they were told by the original seller when they bought their house, there was going to be a ten-lot subdivision? And now that's exceeded that. Is there any evidence of that or is that a verbal thing? Or was that in writing?
Travis Bush, pastor, South Coast. I've been there almost four years, January. We actually, I don't believe that was in writing at all as far as the ten-lot subdivision. And there's always been plans to develop that land into something. And so, the fact that someone- fact that, um, someone told these homeowners, and, and we have no idea who it is now, I mean, that was years ago, in church, um, it's a revolving door, and so, we have no idea who would have shared that with them back when they purchased their lots, um, but we went back, and that is in none of our documents.
Sure, there's nothing...
As far as officially documenting that it was a ten-lot subdivision, because there was always plans to improve, and, and if I may just kind of speak, we spoke on feelings earlier, um, we have always had a very good relationship with these folks, I hope and pray that continues. Mr. Collins parks his landscape truck in our parking lot every night, and we hope that that continues, their children use our playground all through the summer, we love that, we hope that continues, and we want to see this neighborhood improved, that's our heart, that's the buyer's heart, and, uh, so I, you know, just if I could speak to any of that for Mr. Collins, I hope the opportunity arises where I can speak to him face-to-face, because I was kind of shocked by some of the, uh, comments made by him considering our relationship over the past four years since I've been there, so, uh, thank you.
Thanks for answering that. I'm all done, Mr. Jeff.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sullivan, I haven't forgotten you. Joe?
Get to, uh, to clean up here, or almost.
Almost.
Almost. Um, yeah, just to quickly, quickly build on that last, the last comment of that last exchange, not to disparage realtors, but it certainly wouldn't be the first time that a, that a realtor sort of assured someone that, oh, that's always going to be undeveloped, or that's conservation land, uh, because I've heard that myself, and I, I think ultimately, as frustrating as it can sometimes be for someone in an, in an established neighborhood, when it comes down to it, it is fire beware, and it's, it behooves you to understand the zoning and understand the nature of the development where you live, um, and, you know, we're, we're talking now about all, you know, moving Lot Fourteen over, up against that lot, among other things, so, um, you know, this has always been a conservation subdivision, and that's just kind of the nature of it, so, I, but on that, I look forward to seeing how that lot is reconfigured, and I look forward to seeing how this comes back from the ZBA. I don't have anything else.
All right, thank you, Corey. Uh, just a couple of things, if I could, um, again, I, I, I know Mr. DuPont mentioned it, but I just want to mention it again, any reconfiguration of Lot Fourteen, please make sure that the, uh, I would ask that not only the wetlands, but potentially the no disturb buffer area around the wetlands be removed from private property if at all possible. Uh, there was a little tiny card, column or space on Lot Fourteen which had the no disturb buffer area, um, in on the actual private property, and if that need not occur, that would be appreciated. Um, in terms of you making that correction, I would ask that, um, there be one other item looked into in the event it need be, and if you make that lot larger, does your open space calculation still work? Do you still have enough open space should you make that Lot Fourteen lot? You don't have to tell me now, I just...
Yes.
Just make sure you redo the calculations, and show calculations on your revised site plan with the open space calc with the new configuration, so that we have that down, if you would please. Um, again, this evening, just seems to have been an evening of first for me, you have presented another one, and I, I, I...
He's collecting...
I don't know what it is, but, uh, you know, we're approaching Halloween, I guess, I, it, something's working here, but this is the first time I've seen a subdivision change that did not require some kind of an amendment of the DEP permitting, so, while I don't disagree with you that, um, you know, everything may be fine in terms of the design, I still think that it would be in the town's best interest to at least have some kind of a email, some kind of, uh, item written from the DEP saying they're okay without coming up with some kind of an amended plan. Um, I just want to keep the records good, so, if you could provide that the next time you come back, or be in the process of providing that, that would be great. Um, just in, you know, you'll probably never have to do this again in terms of this particular site or location, but it's always great that whenever you bring back a revised plan, that you actually show us what the original was, it's just kind of a, like, we don't know what you're changing, really, unless we know what was there, so, that's more of a comment than anything else, not, um, and we talked about the legal homeowners, and I think that you need to have some fun with zoning boards of appeals, and we'll get to see you again. I have nothing else unless you have something for us.
Well, I guess, I just want to make sure, um, so, this, I, I'm thinking we would leave this little, probably leave this little, uh, open space finger in the back, and then Lot Fourteen would look, uh, similar to that, I mean, I'm...
No, and I'm confused, no, I thought the idea was to take that wetland out of...
Uh, yes, see, the red line, the red line goes, would be our new border, so, we would box that out, so we'd be, there'd be part of Lot Fourteen over here, and then Lot Fourteen over here, connected down here, where I have the red, uh, stripes, and that would allow us over by our suitable soils...
By ordinance, the property lines have to go by.
Gotcha. Okay, I'm all set.
The only, the only thing I would offer, in, when you take a look at that, in, in terms of what Chairman was just saying, in terms of your fifty percent calculation, that wetland nugget that you're taking out, wouldn't meet any of the, to count towards open space, it needs to be an acre contiguous land, so, I'm guessing that's less than an acre, um, so that would probably have to come out of your open space calculation, and if you want, try to maintain that back finger, that, yep, that would need to be fifty feet wide at a minimum to count towards open space. It can still be in the open space, just not count towards your fifty percent, so, just as you're running your numbers, um, so we don't have you do an academic exercise, overdo it multiple times.
I think we have ten, ten or eleven extra, additional open space acres, so I think we have room to play with.
You're probably plenty.
So, let me ask, uh, this one then, so this, so, we take this out of the lot, so then we just have, I guess, the Homeowners Association owns it, so it's just kind of a little rectangle sitting there, I guess, that...
Yeah, what the ordinance says, and, and the board's certainly been very consistent over the years, that wetlands and their buffers are to be off the, the, off lots, but what it says is, it, they need to be off lots if you want to count them towards your open space, so, you know, the board certainly has, this is where the board does have the discretion to say, you know, keep wetlands out of the open space, because the ordinance talks about wetlands mitigation and, and trying to have, minimize adverse impacts. Um, so I guess, you know, the question to the board is, how, would you be more comfortable with sort of that rectangle around the wetlands being part of the Homeowners Association open space, completely encompassed by Lot Fourteen, I think it is, or would you be more comfortable having it just be part of Lot Fourteen, still have the no disturb buffer around it, that's a DEP regulation, regulation? On the face of the earth, it's going to look very similar, or it's just a matter of ownership?
Well, yeah, and you know, if you take a look at the, um, yeah, we've, we've got two, we've, we've, two, we've got two.
Those were, those were pinned, there's a note with a requirement that those had to be pinned every, I think it was twenty-five feet or something.
Right.
Uh, like that.
This was done before we got really sticky about not putting wetlands, allowing wetlands on, on private property, but, um, I, considering that there's also, already a thing about pinning it, they've got two out there now, by the way, just nods, so you don't have to get up and down, nobody's fooling around with those wetlands, nobody's filling those wetlands, they're not disappearing, okay, so, we've got, we've got a, and my discretionary thing is, we've got something there that's already in place, that's working, so why, why make it even more complicated? Just make sure that it's, um, separated off, you know, that it's not, never mind, I made my point.
So, your suggestion is just pin it, but do not make it part of the open space, make it part of the property?
Yep.
Is what you're suggesting to the board?
What I'm suggesting, I know, I know, I'm going against everything you believe in. Look at him, look at him, he's not going to talk to me. I'm sorry about that.
No, I, I, I get it.
It just seems in this particular case, you know, let's, let's go the whole way in terms of things you've never seen before.
I, I, I'm not going to be able to make it back.
I know, I know, you're in shock.
I am.
Anyway, that was just my suggestion.
All right, and if that's the feeling of the board, I mean, that's...
Well, should I have wetland in my land?
Oh, we're, we're going to talk about it again when it comes back, so...
Yeah, we will.
Except, uh, next time, we, I think we would like to be, um, we would like to, we would be asking for approval, hopefully, so, I'd like to...
You'd like to know what we want?
I'd like to, I'd, yes.
He wants to know what we want.
Well, what...
Yeah, I know.
What we want is a letter from the DEP.
We want a look at the DEP.
I actually have that right here.
There you go, so, we're good to go there, um, and in feeling of the board on the, on the wetlands, just take a straw vote here.
I'd go with Susan.
I'd go with Susan.
Yeah, to me, it's somewhat similar to the kind of grandfather situation we had earlier tonight.
Yeah.
So, Nick, our opinion doesn't matter?
No.
Okay. Make it part of the property.
Pin it.
Okay.
Pin them both.
I knew you were for it anyway, Nick, so, I mean, I...
I think we're done with it.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. All right, our next item this evening, item number nine, was physically removed from the agenda, uh, because I actually did an administrative approval on it, as it was a timing issue more than anything else, um, we needed to either get it on the agenda, or I needed to approve it, and I couldn't get to it in time, so, Jay put it on the agenda, and I got to, so, that's why it's not on the agenda this evening.
That's fine.
Uh, next item is the Town Planner's Report.
Mr. Chairman, you just stole my thunder on Town Planner's Report and Administrative Report, so, number ten and eleven, you covered for me, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, item number twelve, correspondence.
We talked about it.
Well, I, I guess this would come under correspondence, um, I've got this, and I read it, believe it or not, from the Scalable Sanitary District, and they brought up for their own discussion, uh, Eastern Village, and, uh, Mr. Anderson was looking for some exceptions, but, uh, the comment was, uh, had he come back to the Planning Board, uh, and, uh, Mr. Anderson explained that it was late in the year, and he asked to get on the Planning Board agenda to have them approve and sign the new mila, that's what it was. So, he asked for permission from the Sanitary District as far as payment is concerned, uh, and, uh, they didn't give it to him. Um, so, do you have any update on that, Jay?
Um, I believe, I believe what the discussion was, was Mr. Anderson was looking to pay his, um, uh, capacity reserve fees on a lot-by-lot basis, rather than on a full-phase basis, that, you know, the, the town or the Planning Board, we have a number of impact fees which typically we try to collect, um, upfront, you know, at, at the outset, but this board has occasionally varied and allowed it, allowed different impact fees be paid on a lot-by-lot basis. He took that proposal to the Sanitary District, and my understanding of that discussion, the Sanitary District declined to go in that direction and held firm to their policy that everything gets paid upfront, so, it really doesn't, that's the discussion I believe you're referring to.
Right.
It doesn't impact this board's approval, so...
But it, what's to mention, just for my own, about the mila?
I don't know, I without...
Have you seen this?
Uh, not in a while, so, yeah, I don't know, offhand, I don't want to guess.
I just, since we were mentioned, I thought I'd bring it up, right?
Sure, I'll take that from you and take a look.
Other correspondence. I have a piece. Uh, I got an invitation to go to Unitil's Main Service Territory Gas Emergency Response and Preparedness Annual Meeting.
Whoopie.
Um, so, they certainly, and this came to the Planning Board, if you will, so, I am not available on November twelfth, which I believe is a Wednesday, the meeting is physically from eight in the morning to ten in the morning, if anybody would like to go in my stead, then just reach out to me and I'll provide you with the information. So, know that that's available. Our next item is Planning Board Comments.
Planning Board Questions?
Planning Board Questions.
The Planning Board Policy on Peer Review Procedure for Transmission and Telecommunication Facilities that you talked about earlier, is this just automatically going to be taken care of, do we have to do anything about it?
We're going to, if, if...
If.
If we want to adopt this as a policy, we will physically take a vote on it this evening.
Ah, that's my question.
So...
Okay.
Um, and I, I think everybody knows what I'm talking about, except maybe Mr. Mazur, who was unable to get to the meeting, but, um...
Mr. Mazur had a question, though, I think, or a comment.
I have a comment, so, well, let's finish with this, and then I'll...
Okay.
So, basically, I mean, coming off the meeting, I think the general consensus was that we take a look and, and review this this evening, and potentially enact it, and so, why don't I at least read it, uh, into the record, and we'll go from there, so, this is, uh, for us to review as a Planning Board Policy on a Peer Review Procedure for Transmission and Telecommunication Facilities. Given the significant technological knowledge required to ensure an applicant adequately substantiates the evidence needed to demonstrate compliance with the performance standards for transmission towers and telecommunication facilities, the Planning Board hereby empowers the town staff to automatically send all applications for review under these provisions out for peer review to aid the board's deliberation of the merits of the application. Is there any discussion?
I make a motion to adopt what the Chairman has just read into the record.
If we have a motion, do we have a second? Mr. DuPont is a second, any discussion?
Just very briefly, I think as we discussed earlier, this is a, a good tool to sort of level the playing field for the board, as we are faced with technical items that come before us, and I think it's a great idea.
I think it takes away any, any delay, actually, in terms of us reviewing an application, uh, puts, I think, everybody from the applicant to the town on a level playing field, and should assist town staff, uh, along the way, and actually expedite the process, so...
I think it's an example of the kinds of things that we do, sometimes I hear things like, you know, we don't take into account the developer, we don't take into account, you know, we're, we're anti-business, all that kind of stuff, because we can be pretty perspicacious about details, but this is an example of the kind of thing that, that indicates that we really do take what the applicant needs into consideration as well. They could come and give us an, um, a, a recommendation, and then we, then we send it out, and so, you know, they're, they're sitting there with three more weeks tied up, so, this is not only helpful to us, it's really helpful to the applicant, and I think it's something that everybody would approve of.
Just, just a general comment, if I could, also, in regards to this, I do want to personally thank, uh, once again, Chairman Sullivan, the Town Council. He and I spent many evenings on the phone, um, discussing this, not just this policy, if you will, but discussing the impact of the ordinance on the Planning Board, the impact of the ordinance on the town, and I know that he worked to try to, um, delay the implementation, if you will, of the policy until, I think, November fifteenth, in an effort to give us a chance to get organized, to be able to put this policy in place before it actually came in front of us. So, clearly, um, Mr. Sullivan, working with the Town Council, put forth the effort to try to accommodate us, and I do want to thank them for making that happen, so, appreciate that. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? I show that to be unanimous as well, um, so that is in fact adopted this evening. Having said that, I'll give that to you, having said that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No.
No.
I will not be here for the next meeting, I will be out of the country all of November.
We need to, if anybody is not going to be here, please reach out to Karen and make sure that we know what we've got for account.
And make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have, we have four seconds.
Is there any?
No good main motion.
The motion is her second.
Susan.
I can make my motion.
Susan motioned, so take your pick on the second. All in favor? All right, good evening and thank you.
I was like, all in favor.